Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Sandra Merman. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Les Miller. Representing District Four, Stacy White. Representing District Five, Mariella Smith. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Kimberly Overman. The county administrator is Mike Merrill. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue, so we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to your Board of County Commissioners' meeting this morning. Will everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by Chaplain Commissioner White?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make decisions this morning and perhaps this afternoon that are important to this county. As always, Lord, I pray for our first responders and members of our armed forces, that you will guide them, comfort them, and deliver them home to their families safely as they return home. I ask for all of these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner White. I hope not this afternoon, but maybe we will. Okay, we have three proclamations this morning, so I'm going to start off with the first one by Commissioner Kemp.
Today, the Board of County Commissioners is proclaiming February as Children's Dental Health Month, and I'd like to invite Tampa Family Health Centers Dr. Monica Ryder and Dr. Anna Leon to come forward. I'd also like to invite Suncoast Community Health Centers Sonya Goodwin, Dr. Valdez, Carmen Feltz, Shante Miller, and Christina Castilla to come forward to receive this proclamation. If you would all come forward.
You can come right up around here if you like. You are not used to being proclaimed, right? As we all know, I think dental health, especially in children, is so important and is sometimes not given, I think, the attention that it deserves, and we're finding out all the kinds of things that lead to later in life. In fact, I just read an article the other day that it might be related somewhat to dementia as our dental health care. So here's the proclamation, and I will pass these out to each of the groups here. Thank you. That is, "Whereas dental disease remains one of the largest preventable maladies affecting millions of people in the United States and the state of Florida, is dedicated to ensuring that quality oral health care is available to all residents and their children. And whereas based on a 2013 report by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, fewer than half of Florida's Medicaid-enrolled children receive any form of dental treatment. And whereas in Hillsborough County, the cost of dental visits for emergency room patients, pediatric patients, rose to over $1 million in 2012, a 26% increase from the previous year. And whereas Tampa Family Health Centers and Suncoast Community Health Centers are federally qualified health centers that aid uninsured and medically underserved individuals in Hillsborough County, thank you all for your work. And whereas the centers provide oral health care and comprehensive outreach, patient education, and dental services, including clinics and mobile treatment that are tailored to meet the unique needs of their patients. And whereas the centers partner with pediatric-focused organizations such as Hillsborough County's school-based sealant program and deliver oral health services in non-traditional settings that include schools and neighborhoods, and I've been out to the dental health mobile vans that are held, and it's just amazing what we do. And whereas Children's Dental Health, they recognize as community health centers and those who are responsible for their continued success since the first oral health clinic opened more than 50 years ago, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners in Florida does hereby declare February 2019 as Children's Dental Health Month in Hillsborough County, and urges all residents to recognize the important contributions of health centers that safeguard oral health and improve the quality of life for all people in need of dental care." And thank you so much. Would someone like to speak to the work you do?
I'm Dr. Valdez, Dental Director with Suncoast Community Health Centers. We're very proud of what we do in all of our sites, both fixed as well as mobile dental program. We render preventive dental services to gracious thousands of children, Head Start children, as well as Title I schools, 38 Title I schools. Some of the schools, they've granted permission now for us to go from kindergarten through fifth grade as well. And then our sites, those children who do have special dental needs are then referred to our clinics. We also have a pediatric dental residency program where we're training dentists to become pediatric dentists, and it's supervised by our well-trained staff of pediatric dentists. So we're very proud of what we do, and we're so thankful that the county has allowed us to be represented here today, and we appreciate the acknowledgement. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we take a picture, I'm going to do something a little unusual. One of the reasons that your work was brought to my attention in such an important way was that I just happened to run into a person in the community when I was in a park in downtown and struck up a conversation, and he brought me over to some of the centers. And so I'd like to call up Pat Oder, and for your excellent volunteer advocacy on behalf of the work, and I want to award you "Make a Difference." Congratulations to you. And we celebrate the recognition of Mr. Pat Oder, whose unwavering commitment to Suncoast Community Health Centers has positive impacts on the greater Palm River community. As a member of the Board of Directors and serving in numerous capacities, he's helped the centers establish a branch in Palm River area, whose specialists have dramatically improved the health and dental care of its residents. For Mr. Oder's generous contributions, we applaud him and his efforts. Thank you so much. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Pat. It's been such a thrill. I'm from Palm River, and we were in such a need of a healthcare system in Palm River, and along came Suncoast Community Healthcare, and says, "You need one, we'll put it there." Thank you, Suncoast.
Thank you all. We'd like to take a picture with the commissioners. I'm sorry?
Yeah, everyone. Yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Would you like to make this?
Good morning. I'm Dr. Monica Ryder, the Chief Medical Officer with Tampa Family Health Centers, and I just want to echo the words of Suncoast Dental Director. We are very honored for this special privilege today, but we do such a great service in the community, both Suncoast and Tampa Family, and it's done selfishly. So we really appreciate you honoring us, and we're going to continue the work. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to move up towards?
I think we might have to move this way around. Thank you all for your work.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. The next proclamation will be presented by Commissioner Merman. Twenty-five dollars.
Always have a little hiccup during our meetings. I'm always so pleased to present this proclamation today to one of the great partners we have here at Hillsborough County, and that's Moffitt Cancer Center. And I'd like to ask Dr. Ron Cox and Dr. Heather Jim to come forward. We like to give this proclamation every year as recognition of their support for the biotech conference. It's the largest biotech conference in the state, and it's a signature event that attracts over 400 biotech executives, entrepreneurs, venture capitalists, angel investors, and researchers from all over the United States. And it's a unique opportunity that Moffitt gives all these people to meet and collaborate with the innovators of our age. And so I'm so pleased to give this proclamation to you for your efforts, and like I said, you've been such a great partner with us in economic development and just the advancements of research and everything you do at Moffitt. It's really remarkable, and we're so proud to call you a partner. So I'll read the proclamation. It says, "Whereas biotechnology is vital to Florida's diversifying economy, and Moffitt Cancer Center's research and innovations are fueling this burgeoning industry. Whereas since 2004, research at Moffitt Cancer Center has resulted in more than 97 United States patents, along with hundreds of commercial licensing agreements, and the creation of nine active biotech startup companies. Whereas Moffitt Cancer Center will host the 13th Annual Business of Biotech Conference with the theme "Cracking the Cancer Code" at Moffitt Cancer Center in Tampa on February 2nd, 2019. Whereas the Business of Biotech Conference will showcase medical innovation and research throughout the Tampa Bay region, bringing together biomedical companies, startups, service providers, entrepreneurs, and investors for networking and partnership discussions. Whereas this year's conference features breakout sessions on artificial intelligence and cancer care and other topics and tours, as well as Dr. Reed Huber, a partner at Third Rock Ventures, being interviewed by ABC News commentator Koki Roberts, who is a member of the Moffitt Cancer Center Board of Advisors. Whereas one of the largest events of its kind in Florida, Moffitt Cancer Center's Business of Biotech Conference is always free of charge, open to all, with an interest in science and innovation. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare February 22nd, 2019, as Moffitt Cancer Center Business of Biotech Day in Hillsborough County, and recognizes Moffitt Cancer Center's Business of Biotech Event for its importance in promoting job creation and strengthening the overall economic well-being of the community. And I'm so proud to present this and just congratulate you again, and would like for you to say a few words, both of you if you'd like.
Well, thank you very much, Commissioner Merman, all the county commissioners, the citizens of Tampa Bay. Moffitt wouldn't be able to continue to thrive in all the aspects that it shows excellence without your support. Many of you know about our amazing clinical care that we offer to the community as Florida's only comprehensive cancer center and preeminent cancer center. Our research efforts that are second to none, our establishment as one of the top cancer centers in the nation, a number eight nationally ranked currently. But the economic development and the economic impact, as well as our ability to partner with individuals through elected officials, through the citizens of Tampa Bay, through our community partners, and also through industry, has truly elevated us to another level. And this is an opportunity at the Business of Biotech Conference for us to bring a service to the citizens of Tampa Bay and to all who want to learn more about what's going on in the biotech space. As mentioned, some of our interesting topics that are going on this year include artificial intelligence and how that affects cancer care, immunotherapy, and specifically a therapy designed to have your body's own immune system affect the treatment of cancer and help yourself give yourself, help give yourself a fighting chance, as well as clinical pathways, streamlining the way that cancer is delivered, and having that go from a specialized cancer center such as Moffitt into our regional local cancer centers and hospitals. We wouldn't be able to do the work that you all, that we do, like I said before, without your help, and we thank you so much. We hope that on February 22nd, you all join us at Moffitt Cancer Center to witness the Business of Biotech Conference. It's truly, truly, truly an exciting experience, and it has grown to be now the largest biotech conference in Florida. And here today to talk a little bit more about the expertise that we have here at Moffitt Cancer Center and the researchers, along with our numerous faculty members and clinicians that are making a difference, I present to you Dr. Heather Jim. Dr. Heather Jim is an associate member in the Health Outcomes and Behavior Department, and her research focuses on understanding the side effects of these debilitating diseases and how they impact and contribute to the quality of care in life. So thank you very much. My name is Dr. Ron Cox, and I present to you Dr. Heather Jim. We say a couple of words.
Thank you. I'd just like to echo Dr. Cox's gratitude to Councilor Merman and the city council and the citizens of Hillsborough County for this proclamation and for all of your support for Moffitt. As Dr. Cox said, I'm one of the faculty members at Moffitt, and my research focuses on side effects of cancer treatment, why they develop, who's at risk, and what we can do to help patients. And one of those side effects, as an example, is cancer-related fatigue. So cancer-related fatigue affects over a third of cancer survivors over the long term. It can be very moderate, severe, and debilitating, and can really interfere with patients' ability to get back to their lives as it was before cancer. And one of the things that we developed at Moffitt Cancer Center with industry funding was a website to help patients change their thoughts, change their behaviors, how they deal with cancer-related fatigue to make it better. And we just finished a large study that really showed very dramatic effects for patients. Patients who could sort of barely get off the couch before they participated in the intervention afterwards were getting back to their lives before cancer. We had patients who had gone back to walking seven miles a day, who were participating in Spartan races. We had one woman who was too tired to plan her wedding, who was able to then plan her wedding and get married after working with us and completing the innovative treatment for fatigue that we have at Moffitt. And so now we're working on rolling that out, not only to all Moffitt patients, but looking at ways to partner with large local employers who may have cancer survivors who work with them, because we think that the intervention helps reduce absenteeism and promote a return to the workforce as well. So, you know, we're really excited about all the work that's going on at Moffitt. That's just one example that's really making patients' lives better here in Tampa and across the nation as well. So thank you.
We'll go take a quick picture.
Commissioner Merman, Commissioner Merman, before we take the picture, you know I'm not going to let Moffitt come here without saying anything.
That's right.
I'm so glad that you did this presentation today to Moffitt, and let me tell you what a type of jewel we have in this community. I'm a three-time cancer survivor. I've been cancer-free for 12 years, thanks to Moffitt. My wife is a two-time breast cancer survivor, and our daughter is a five-time cancer survivor. In fact, she's getting treatment at Moffitt as we speak. And we're all alive because of the work and the research that you've done at Moffitt. I can tell you now, from the time my daughter had her first breast cancer surgery to the time my wife had her last one in 2012, the research had changed what you did dramatically. And they didn't have to go, she didn't have to go through the things that my daughter did when she first got breast cancer in 2001 at the age of 29 years old. So I just want to thank you for what you do, whatever I can do or we can do here to help you out. Please let us know. I get phone calls all the time, and I refer you to Moffitt, and you never turn them down. So we have a jewel in this community, and thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll present the next proclamation. Program, and I see Ms. Combs, who's the exec director of University Area CDC, and all those that's affiliated with Prodigy. Prodigy has transformed over 29,000 lives throughout its 19 years of service. The program teaches valuable life skills through arts and is funded by the Florida Department of Juvenile Justice in Hillsborough County. Prodigy is a research-based prevention and outreach program that traditionally serves youth, but within the last two years, the program expanded to include seniors and the homeless in Head Start Centers administered by the University Area CDC program partners. For Hillsborough County locations include Boys and Girls Club of Tampa Bay, the Tampa Housing Authority, the Florida Institute of Community Studies, the Florida Orchestra, and the Florida Museum of Photographic Art. Over 1,004 of the youth and adults received 4,200 hours of life skills instructions last year. And let me say this for our young people, Prodigy has put the money up front in making sure that those that may be on the cusp of getting themselves in the juvenile justice system and make sure that money goes to the end, so we can not go into the end, so we can make sure that they're not in the prison system. So today, I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas Prodigy is a research-based prevention and diversion program for youth aged five through 17 that uses visual and performing arts to reach over 1,000 youth who live in high-risk neighborhoods each year. Whereas participants in the Prodigy Culture Arts Program benefit on the SS-based youth development model that infuses cultural arts lessons with life and self-control skills such as anger management, problem solving, and communication. And whereas by modifying young people's behavior, the Prodigy Culture Arts Program prevents them from moving deeper into the juvenile justice system, thus saving the state money, improving communities, and transforming young lives. And whereas throughout west-central Florida, the Prodigy Culture Arts Program showcases features the creative talents of participants during the month of February. And whereas Prodigy Culture Arts Month recognizes the artistic talents of at-risk young people in the program and supports a positive transformation in their lives as they pursue art and culture. And whereas the showcase allows attendees to watch children express themselves through various art forms such as dance, music production, vocal performances, painting, photography, drums, keyboard, guitar, sculpture, drawing, spoken word, and creative writing. And whereas the Prodigy Cultural Arts Program transforms the lives of at-risk young people in Hillsborough County throughout the use of visual and performing arts, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare February 2019 as Prodigy Cultural Arts Month in Hillsborough County, and urges all citizens to recognize the value of Prodigy Cultural Arts Program and supports its mission to serve at-risk young people across west-central Florida, executed the sixth day of February 2019.
Woo-hoo!
Well, thank you so much. We are just so excited to be able to, again, come before you all and share with you the power of cultural arts in our community. A couple of years ago, our funding got dramatically cut from the state, and we plead and we beg the Board of County Commissioners to step in to be able to serve the youth in our community so that they wouldn't be put out of their after-school program, many of which who didn't have any other after-school programming, which was really important, and we really want to focus on prevention. The Board of County Commissioners came to our rescue and said, "We think these youth are important, and we're going to help you with, you know, supporting this program." And so we couldn't be more thankful with the Board of County Commissioners' support, as well as county administrator Mike Merrill. We've been able to not just take the program from serving youth, but to serve adults, as Commissioner Miller said. We're able to now go into homeless shelters, senior centers, Head Start, and serve a whole population that has never been served before, and the results have just been amazing. So we just appreciate so much the Board of County Commissioners' support and all that you have shown us in this community. You're really transforming not just young lives, but all lives. And we want to specifically thank our champion, Commissioner Miller, and we have a piece of art that we'd like to present to him somewhere. These are from our youth. These are from our youth. Our youth did this, and I think it's pretty darn amazing. So on behalf of the youth in our Prodigy Cultural Arts Program, we want to thank you, Commissioner Miller, for being our champion and making sure that all of these youth, 1,400, with this partnership are able to be able to be served and really focus on prevention. So thank you so much for your support and all of your support.
Thank you. I look better on campus than I look in real life, so I just wanted to...
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. I do want to say, before I introduce some members of our team, that Commissioner Miller, from the day that I first presented here two years ago, asking for the county's help, you have been undeniably such a supporter of what we've been trying to do with expanding the program, and I could never thank you enough. I am so, I feel such an affinity for you and for your work, and now that we've been able to work even more on our programs, just expanding throughout the area and to serve so many people, like Sarah had mentioned, again, you don't realize how many people we've touched because of your support and because of the Board of County Commissioners' support. So thank you. And we have our team here behind us who work tirelessly at the University Area CDC through the Prodigy Cultural Arts Program to make sure that our youth and our seniors and our homeless centers and our Head Start Centers are just flourishing more through the arts. So we have here the program manager of the Hillsborough County grant, Ron Bradford. We also have Janice Walls, who is our, I'm sorry, she just got promoted. So she's now our human resources director. We have Brian Martinez. You, if you ever walk through the Tampa site at the University Area CDC for the Prodigy Cultural Arts Program, you will see this young man there. He is championing the program in our local area. And then we also have our new chief operations officer, Josie Rocco, and she's so humble about that, but I just had to say, she's doing a great job, and she just got that promotion. And then we also, oh, we, so we've been doing a lot of promoting lately. Thank you, Sarah. So we also have our new program manager, Daniel Kahifa, and we also have Nia Dana, who is also working on the Hillsborough County grant. So Commissioner Miller, again, because of the support that, you know, you helped streamline through the Board of County Commissioners, and I know you're so stoic and some, but I know you're touched right now, but we have all these opportunities, not just for our young people, but also for our staff and for the parents and families, and so thank you, thank you, thank you. And thank you all.
Commissioner. Thank you.
Who do you recognize?
Thank you. To all of you, I want to tell you how proud I am, and you actually have another ally in your corner. I've been following the funding and the cut of funding of our cultural arts, and this is a perfect example of the richness of what the arts brings to not only our community, but to our children, to our seniors, and to all that you are doing. The fact that you're nationally recognized for the excellence that you provide to our community, I am so honored that this board has chosen to support you, when maybe we have not seen that at the state level. This is a perfect example of how important it is for us to fund our cultural arts and to deliver the excellence that you are doing. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, good morning Commissioners. We have nothing added and nothing pulled from the agenda. We do have a few time certands beginning at 10:00 a.m., your one public hearing to consider the imposition of special assessments against real property comprising the proposed Dana Shores Pelican Island at Rocky Point Electric Distribution Facilities project. And related to that is item B5, also to be heard at 10:00 a.m., which is a note resolution to authorize the issuance of $2.6 million in revenue notes to pay for the construction of the distribution facilities. At 10:15, we have two items. F3, which is to consider the recommendation from the county's outside litigation and bond council to proceed with a bond validation regarding the transportation surtax. And B1, which is a draft of the transportation sales tax interlocal agreement for your review and comment. At 10:30, we have actually, looks like four items. All of them are Commissioner Murman's items relating to the health care plan. F4 is to consider eliminating the three-strikes policy from the health care plan. G3 is a report on the three-strikes policy. F5 is to increase the eligibility to 138% of the federal poverty guidelines. And F6 is to add vision services to the health care plan. At 10:45, item F2, Commissioner Hagan's item, is to approve the domestic abuse pet sheltering program. At 11:15, we have two items, both related to the proposed 2021 Super Bowl. E1 is a special appearance by Rob Higgins, CEO of Tampa Bay Sports Commission, and he'll present the proposal for Super Bowl in 2021. And then there's an agreement with the House Committee to fund our share of that cost to, in an amount not to exceed $3 million. And the final time certain is F7, and that's to introduce Mr. John Flanagan, the newly hired CEO of Career Source Tampa Bay, and that's Commissioner Murman's item. Those are the changes.
Motion by Commissioner Murman. Second by Commissioner White to approve the changes to the agenda. Seeing further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
We now move to public comments. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the Board members. However, it is requested at the same time when you address the Board that your comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issue. This provides a mutual respect between the Board members and the public. The Board has set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comment. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. Persons wishing to speak before the Board during the public comment portion of the meeting should complete the electronic request for public comment form located at the sign-up table inside the Boardroom. Citizens speaking on scheduled agenda items will be heard before citizens speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. When addressing the Board, please state your name. You don't have to give addresses anymore, just your name, and speak clearly into the microphone. There are three minutes allotted for each speaker. The first speaker we have is Noel Lacor, followed by Sue Williams.
Good morning, Board. I'm here to speak on Agenda Item F8. My name is Noel Lacor. I live in Ruskin. I'm here today to tell you all how important crosswalks and crossing guards are for our middle and high school students. I drive through Leonard School Zone quite frequently. There's no crosswalks, not even the basic white lines. Many times I've watched kids forced to run across Shellpoint Road to get to 21st Street. The kids are literally running for their lives. Hillsborough County has the second highest pedestrian death rate in the nation and the highest per capita in the state of Florida. I hope you all will vote yes to having staff estimate the cost for crossing guards and then please vote yes to fully funding it. I know this agenda item is about crossing guards, but I just have to say that we also desperately need sidewalks. We have plenty of sidewalks to nowhere and not enough sidewalks to somewhere. Children should not have to walk in busy roads to get to school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sue Williams?
My name is Sue Ellen Williams, and I am here to speak also on Agenda Item F8 and to support the mothers, parents that are here today to get the crossing guard program funded for all Hillsborough County schools. I kind of feel like as taxpayers and parents, we have worked really well with the changes that have been handed down to us regarding public schools and buses and funding. We've been told we don't have enough funding for buses, so we all adjusted our start times so that we could share. Parents have worked with that. We're midway through the first year of that program and it seems to be working. Courtesy busing within two miles has been eliminated for middle school and high school students. While some would argue that they are older and can handle that change, I would argue that I taught middle schoolers for six years and that they are just, as in, you know, face, they face the same struggles, excuse me, judging, you know, car distance and speed, making decisions. And we also need to recognize that these older students are the ones most likely to have cell phones, which are a major distraction for them in the mornings and the afternoons. We are also facing new challenges. At my children's elementary school, Roosevelt Elementary in South Tampa, one of our major roads in the north is Bay to Bay Boulevard. It's getting repaved in a month, and I just confirmed with the city of Tampa yesterday that, excuse me, we are actually losing a striped crosswalk to that project. It's just disappointing. It's going to fettle more children to the same roads. And like I said, that's something that, you know, I just discovered by conversing with other parents, and I definitely want to speak to the city. It's their jurisdiction is my understanding about that. All of these things, all of these changes, they basically put more walkers on the roads, many of which don't have complete sidewalks. I know our school neighborhood has a lot of sidewalks to nowhere. They're only in houses with new construction. We don't have crosswalks, and without crosswalks, we can't even have crossing guards. So it is a big problem, not just related to crossing guards, there's also funding to be looked at for those changes to be made. I implore you today to listen to the parents, taxpayers, stakeholders, students, teachers that are advocating for funding for crossing guards, not only for middle schools, but really for all schools. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Josephine Amato, followed by Jessica Sims or Simms.
Hi, good morning, County Commissioners. My name is Josephine Amato. I am a local advocate. I run Safe Bus for Us, which is an advocacy organization advocating for students safe past a school. We're about 1,800 strong, but I live in an area which represents about 10,000 voters. So Hillsborough County has the second highest pedestrian death rate in the nation of all 50 states. We are number two at killing our citizens. And the number one killer of our teens in America are crashes, and most of those crashes on the way to and from school. People think that elementary school-age students are the only ones we need to protect, but the truth is, we are losing our teenagers in far greater numbers due to crashes in equal to gun violence. The safe pass to school is a trifecta. At the top is the school bus. If your child is on an American school bus, they are 7,000%, 7,000% less likely to die in a crash than in your vehicle, which is only 70% safer. Okay? If they are walking on the road, it's, you know, all the games, all the rules are off. So there's a trifecta at the top of the school bus. Then there's the safe design, which includes crosswalks, traffic control, sidewalks, buffers between pedestrians and cars. And the third is enforcement. Our crossing guards are the enforcement. We have an Attorney General legal opinion, number, let me see, I'll give that to you later, 8027, which the Attorney General said, "The 1985 legislator provided new method for funding for school crossing guard program for counties and municipalities, thereby reinforced conclusion that the local governments have the financial responsibility for the provisions of safety personnel. In addition to any civil penalties imposed by this section for the state, the clerk of the court is authorized upon approval of the Board of the County Commissioners of said county to assess an additional penalty of up to $4 per violation for the purpose of funding your crossing guard program." I don't know if we're assessing that extra $4, but that is an avenue of additional funding. In the same opinion, the Attorney General said, "I am of the opinion that the municipality is responsible for furnishing such school crossing guards while the county has such responsibility where the crossing is located in unincorporated areas of the county as well. That that is our responsibility as our county, as our, as our public munition, public environment, sorry, getting tongue-tied, that we are responsible to fund the crossing guard program." Even if a crosswalk exists, I see this every day, the cars are in the crosswalks. Our children are doing snaking through cars that are making right turns, that are going left turns, and the science is behind, our children are unable to navigate that. So please fund crossing guards. Thank you.
Jessica Sims or Simms, followed by Danielle Waymire.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jessica Sims, and I'm a parent from Morena Middle School and hear about Agenda Item F8. I've spent the entire school year with Danielle Waymire at the crosswalks in the mornings and afternoons. We are there to help children safely cross the streets to the best of our abilities, even though we were told we weren't supposed to. There were numerous amounts of unnecessary close calls that children have come in contact with. Without the crossing guards present, students were often very nervous to cross the streets by themselves of, in fear of not being seen by passing cars that are usually driving too fast or may not be paying attention. Since the crossing guards have been present by private funding, this has been significantly decreased. The students that are walkers and bike riders are truly grateful, and I'm here, and I hear them thanking the crossing guards almost daily. I really hope that you will consider what Commissioner White and Sheriff Cronister are proposing for the safety of our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Danielle Waymire, followed by Ryan Pippen.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Danielle Waymire, and my children attend Morena Middle School. I am here this morning to ask that you support Commissioner White and Sheriff Cronister in possibly finding funding to have crossing guards at all our Hillsborough County middle schools. I can assure you that crossing guards are needed. I have spent all year advocating for crossing guards for our school, only to be told time and time again, there is no funding. Myself and Ms. Sims have been in our crosswalk helping students twice a day until January 22nd. Back in September, I was informed of a private crossing guard company that had been hired by two Hillsborough County charter schools. It took a few months to get this approved through Hillsborough County public schools, but we were grateful it was. Morena Middle School was the first public school to use a private crossing guard company. With this endeavor came a price tag of $13,000. We fundraised and we were able to raise the full amount. On January 22nd, 2019, Morena Middle School had three full-time crossing guards. Why was this so important? Since the removal of our busing within the two-mile radius of our school, the number of walkers and car riders has significantly increased. For example, Morena Middle School has around 1,300 students. We only have five buses, which leaves over 900 students that are either walkers or car riders, gridlock, speeding, distracted drivers, and zero adult supervision, and now add our walkers to this scenario. It is set up for disaster. We have had a father hit while leaving our school on his bicycle. I've had to move a child out of the way of an oncoming car. Both myself and my children have almost been hit. So Ms. Sims and myself made sure we were at one of our crosswalks every day, making sure our students were able to leave school safely. How could we, in good conscience, turn our back and walk away? What if a child was hit? A burden we couldn't stand to bear. Morena was able to raise enough money for the rest of the school year, but we cannot raise $26,000 for next year. Parents should not have to pay to have our crossing guards, nor should students have to worry about arriving and leaving school. Everyone in the room I know wants the same thing, safety for our students. Hillsborough County is the second highest in pedestrian deaths. How about having Hillsborough County be the first to implement crossing guards at our middle schools? So today I'm asking you to make a choice to keep our students safe by working with our sheriff and Commissioner White to help find funding for this important cause. One child injured and killed is a child too many. Let's not look back on today wishing we had moved forward with this sooner. By moving forward, we can prevent the unthinkable from happening to one of our students and their families. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Ryan Pippen, followed by Michelle Walker.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Ryan Pippen, and I'm the parent of a child at Rogers Middle School located in Riverview. And I'm here today to attest to the need on Agenda Item F8 to install striped crosswalks and implement crossing guards at our middle schools. Rogers Middle School in Riverview has a student body of around 750 students, and that student body is growing alongside the community considerably. And with that means increased traffic. Now Rogers is situated in a way that there's only one main street. And unfortunately, every morning and every afternoon, dozens and dozens of our students who do not have access to the buses and do have access to cars, and they're walking and biking their way to and from school every day, they have to make a decision. Unless they live on the same side of the street as the school, do they take their lives in their own hands and play Frogger and try to cross a very, very busy road? Or do they walk nearly half mile to a mile out of their way to go to another very busy intersection where there is a striped crosswalk, but it's not monitored? Unfortunately, many of those students make that decision to try to take their lives in their hands just so they can get across the street to their school. Now, this has become a bit of a critical issue at Rogers Middle School, and in the past, we got to a point where we have several faculty, staff, and even volunteers at the school who show up in the morning and the afternoons to try to even direct traffic, stop traffic to allow our students to cross safely. But that puts them in danger as well, and this feels unnecessary. Now we've gotten to a point, we're at Rogers, we've also heard of the situation at Morena, and our PTA has started conversations with a private crossing guard institution to try to put in something in place in the meantime until we can get public funding. Unfortunately, this raises a couple of concerns. For one, this cannibalizes our PTA money. This is money that we raise for student programs. It goes back directly to the students and enhances their experience, their educational opportunities in the school. And now we have to largely redirect that just for a simple safety item. So anyway, that takes a lot of our money. And we just ask you to think of our children. The safety of our children is paramount. And if we have an opportunity to work alongside the sheriff's office, we should be looking at these programs and we should be funding this safety item for our children. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Michelle Walker. Ms. Walker is the last person that will be speaking on Agenda Items. I know some of you signed up for D1. You'll be called up when that particular item of a public hearing will be brought forth at that particular point in time. Is Michelle Walker here? Michelle Walker? Joan O'Brien? She'll be followed by Travis Horn.
Mr. Tier, can I just make a comment? I have my button pushed, I'm sorry. About Michelle Walker, and I'm sorry she's not here. I was actually going to pull this item for recognition. Miracles Outreach does an outstanding job helping victims of human trafficking. And the consent item is really to allow money from the victim assistance program to go to them, but I just want to put a positive, really, word out there for the group and all the work that they're doing. I don't know why she's not here. She signed up, maybe she had to leave, but I think she was going to...
Is she here?
Oh, there she is.
Ms. O'Brien, would you, Ms. O'Brien, have a seat in the front row there, and I'll call you back up, Ms. Walker.
Good morning.
Good morning. I apologize, I did not know that my name was on the list to be able to speak this morning, but I did want to say thank you to you all this morning, to the county commissioners for supporting the work that Miracles Outreach does. Commissioner Merman, I appreciate your comments, and I thank you, and Commissioner White for heading this up for us and allowing us to be able to just partner with the county to continue to help make a difference in the lives of the young people that we serve, as well as this gives us an opportunity to extend the age of the victims that we normally work with up to age 24. This allows us to go a little beyond our normal circumstance, so I appreciate all that you all do, and I thank you so much for your support. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, so, Ms. O'Brien.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joanne O'Brien, East Lake Park, East Tampa. I'm here about our sidewalk issues here in the county. Children have to go to school, and they have a two-mile thing. They walk on Orient Road. We have no sidewalk there because the casino had put a wall up outside our development, and there's bushes there. Somebody got hurt pretty badly on the 23rd. Also, Horny Road is a nightmare with all the traffic going down there. And when I go to get boxes for our food bank on a Thursday morning up north of Sly Avenue, up by the river, you see kids walking down to Tampa Bay Tech, and there's no sidewalks there. And if it's dark, you're right on top of that kid, and it, it's pretty bad. I don't know what the sales tax is going to be used for, but I think as a county, we have to protect our kids, our residents, and what have you. We did have somebody killed out on Orient Road, I think within the last month or two. I'm not certain because I've been out of town and in the hospital. So I, I don't know what the answer is, but we have to do something about this. And the old man that got hurt last week, I think it was the 23rd, is now in rehab, and he was hurt pretty bad. He was knocked out and went to fall with 10, 10 stitches in his head. So I thank you very much for your time.
Looking, Ms. O'Brien, that's on our radar screen.
Excuse me?
That is on our radar.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, right. Travis Horn, followed by David McAllister.
Thank you. I have some prepared remarks I want to share with you this morning. Before I do, I want to say what a great job the moms and dads of Hillsborough County have done for the sidewalks and, and crossing guards. I think that's fantastic. And along the same vein, my name is Travis Horn of 9304 Bianca Court, Riverview, and I'm here to speak on behalf of proud members of the Hillsborough County Firefighters Union. I see many of them have joined us today. As a community, we rely on our first responders to sound the alarm and to keep us and our families safe from harm. I'm here with these brave men and women to do just that. We are alerting you that our firefighters and medics are handling calls at a frenetic pace. Call volumes are way up over the last decade, while growth of this department, particularly the construction of new fire stations, has remained virtually static. We do not seek an adversarial debate where there ought to be none. We just firmly believe that public safety should be the first priority for all of us. It should be job one. This is something we can and should all agree upon irrespective of ideology or party labels. We want this to be a moment of unity and encourage all of you to take up this topic as an important part of a much-needed and long overdue community conversation where we examine the facts about why and how we got, we have gotten into this predicament. Building one new fire station over the last decade and rebuilding another existing station is not enough to address the increased demands growth here in Hillsborough County has placed on our public safety infrastructure. And we believe it's already on the radar of many of you. It has to be. We'll be launching an informational website soon at GetTheFireFacts.com. That's GetTheFireFacts.com, and we invite you and interested residents to bookmark that domain where you'll be able to access facts and figures regarding the extraordinary growth and the resulting pressure that growth is placing on our first responders and our public safety infrastructure. We seek a constructive dialogue with you. Again, we hope you'll take up this issue as a matter of great public importance and consider how we will fund at least one new fire station per year until we can ensure our citizens have the protection they deserve and that they pay for. We must address this. We can literally save lives by doing so now, rather than continuing to kick the can down the road. Thank you for your consideration.
David McAllister, followed by Matthew Varble.
Good morning, Commissioners. David McAllister. I come here to advocate for an appreciation of local history and veterans, especially those of the period of the War Between the States. I missed you all last month in January. There were two holidays in January. Number one, Robert E. Lee's birthday, which is still an official statutory holiday in Florida, and number two, Martin Luther King Day. And the Judo P. Benjamin camp of the Sons of Confederate veterans and the Augusta Evans-Wilson chapter of the United Daughters of the Confederacy were invited to be in the King Parade in Cross City, Florida again, and we brought down Mr. H.K. Edgerton, the well-known Southern Civil Rights activist and past NAACP president from North Carolina to be with us. He's been here to visit this chamber many times, as you all know. He also presented living history at the Brooksville Raid in Hernando County, telling about the Black Confederate soldiers' experience for several hundred schoolchildren. I tell you all, Hillsborough could benefit from more historical tourism of this type. Upcoming, we have the Battle of Olusty in Columbia County and the Battle of Natural Bridge in Leon County. Also Confederate Flag Day in March, and I'd like to note that the Super Bowl, again, was not scared away from Tampa by our giant flag flying there at I-75. And in April will come Confederate Memorial Day, which is another state holiday, and for which I ask you to issue another proclamation recognizing the sacrifice of the men and civilians from Hillsborough County in the War Between the States. And for the newcomers on the commission, this is a tradition that goes back to the 1990s and was an agreement by the County Commission in perpetuity at that time. Monday, I was up in Tallahassee in support of the Soldiers and Heroes Monuments Protection Act, House Bill 97 and Senate Bill 288, which is bipartisan and basically what we already have here in Hillsborough County concerning veterans, but also includes policemen, firemen, first responders, and also astronauts as persons whose service and their memorials should be protected from vandalism and desecration. John Grant of the Hillsborough delegation is very important in getting this through this, the legislation. I hope you all would support this protection because it really just mirrors what we already have here in Hillsborough County. Thank you very much. See you again soon.
Matthew Varble, followed by Gus Muich.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Matthew Varble. I appear before you as one of the elected trustees of the Lago Vista Maintenance District. And what you have in front of you is a photograph of a symptom of a bigger problem that I'm here to discuss. The Lago Vista Maintenance District was formed in 1987. We are in unincorporated Hillsborough County, and the northwest perimeter of the district is at the intersection of Waters and Himes. There are seven elected trustees to four-year terms. When I moved here seven years ago after serving as the elected leader of my community in Ohio, I said, "I've been cured of ever wanting to do this again," but here I am. And the reason I decided to run for office is because of the infrastructure problems that we have...
Sir, hold on a minute.
Yes.
Could you close the back door, please? The noise is coming in. Okay, proceed, sir.
So other than being, thought I was cured, I guess not, but the reason I am here is on behalf of my constituents that I represent as a trustee of this district. This district has not had infrastructure improvements since 1981, and the constituents I represent would like a return on their investment because we've been paying taxes that entire time. Not me specifically, but the constituents of that district. The problem you see in front of you is the symptom of the larger problem of collapsing infrastructure. We have collapsing sewer lines, water lines that are rupturing, and stormwater lines that are rupturing, opening giant holes in the street. Many of these streets are single points of access to Waters Avenue, and if you continue to have failing infrastructure such as this that has not been addressed since 1981, it represents a life, health, and safety issue because the access of emergency services could be impeded by this infrastructure problem. So the reason I'm here again is to advocate on behalf of the constituents I represent as an elected trustee of this district, and I respectfully ask for there to be given a return on the investment that we, the taxpayers of this district, have made since 1981. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Gus Muich, I know I messed that up, followed by Glenn Ich, of Glenn Ich.
Mr. Chair, just a response to the prior speaker.
Yes, sir.
John Lyons told me that our contractor is currently installing well points around the culvert, which has been extremely wet, and they should be able to start replacing the actual stormwater infrastructure by the end of this month. So the work is underway and should be done...
You hear that, Mr. Varble? Okay, all right.
Mr. ...
Commissioner Merman, you recognized.
Yes, I was getting ready to just say that. My office has been working with Mr. Varble, and we have successfully, I think, gotten to a resolution of the issues, and we'll pay more attention to his neighborhood, for sure. Thank you.
Okay, sir.
My name is Gus Munich. I like to thank Commissioner Merman and Sheila for the solar data concerning Hillsborough County and TECO. Hillsborough County has been great in supplying me with information about solar energy. TECO plans to produce 7% of its electricity from solar. TECO has in Hillsborough County four solar farms that produce enough electricity for about 36,000 homes on 1,677 acres. Hillsborough County installed solar panels on the old courthouse, libraries, planning solar farms, and, and plans to, the Taylor landfill for a solar farm and other projects. But I wonder why Hillsborough County have no plans for solar grid for new development. South Miami, San Francisco both mandate solar panels for new homes. Polls show 77% of Floridians that more cities should install solar panels on new homes. Hillsborough County needs to work with TECO to locate where solar grids would be possible for new development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize.
I'd just like to thank you, Mr. Munch, for coming in and let you know, too, that Hillsborough County has been, in the last couple of years, I've been really working hard to bring forward a number of solar programs, and we have supported the Florida Sun, the Solar Community Panel Program for Homes. We had the largest number of people joining in to have panels placed on their homes of any area in the country. They operate in about six or seven states and throughout Florida, and we initiated funding that in Hillsborough County. Also, the Solar Energy Loan Fund, the SELF program, which does energy efficiencies and solar, and we've invested, have a full-time person working with their fund here for lower income or people that are, have issues, credit issues, for energy efficiency and solar opportunities at their residence. We as well, I believe, and I'm not sure if Mike King, Mr. Merrill can confirm this or not, I believe that we have started a far more aggressive program in paneling our public buildings. And did we invest $4 million this year in solar panels?
I think that's correct, yeah.
As a county, and I appreciate all this movement forward also, but that, that you've suggested, because I think we need to become more aggressive. But I did want to let, we've also gone into LED lighting with many of our parks and public facilities as a measure, as well as looking at electrifying our fleet and our bus service through HEART. That's not this board's responsibility, but I, I did want to let you know about all that. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Our last speaker for the morning is Glenn, is it Ike?
Ike, yes.
Got it.
We'll keep working on that.
Actually, the, the issue that I wanted to address is on the agenda. I believe that the Affordable Housing Staff is going to submit a report to the commission today concerning the $5.1 million in the housing, Affordable Housing Budget allocation.
It won't be today, sir. That's the 20th, the 20th.
It says here, February 6, 2019, regular meeting. Item 2,063 of the short-term future consideration, next to the last page. But anyway, I, I'd like to, I'd like to address affordable housing. There was a meeting last night by the Affordable Housing Services. It was a forum asking for public input, and one of the major topics of discussion and consideration was a program of tiny homes and/or container homes for the houseless community here in Hillsborough. And there's an issue there that I'd like to bring to the commission's attention, that throughout the country, it's been shown in various cities, that these programs work only as a housing-first program. When you impose conditions on the people that you're offering this to, such as drug rehabilitation or substance rehabilitation programs, job training programs, mental health counseling, when you impose those conditions, rather than just offer them, the houseless community rejects it. I know enough people that are houseless, they're my friends, in what limited ways I can, I try to help them, and I do know that they have to be offered the dignity and the respect of making their own decisions about their own future. If they're offered the services, they will take advantage of it. If you set up a housing-first program with conditions that are demanded for them to take advantage of the program, they'll reject that, and it's, it's setting the program up for failure. So if you do consider either in the short term or in the, in the future, even on a test basis, a housing-first program, I highly recommend that it be a true housing-first program. If you impose conditions that they're going to reject, you just don't even have a right to really say that it was a failure because of them, because they need to make those decisions on their own, and they will make those decisions on their own. And I just wanted to address that issue, and I thank you.
Mr. Chair, just for the speaker's information, sir, that item is scheduled for the 20th. Originally, it was scheduled for today, but if you, if you look to the far right side there, yeah, it's the 20th, so, yeah, okay, just wanted to be sure.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize.
Yes, we did have an Affordable Housing Forum to take in information and requests from the community and suggestions from the community on how to utilize the funding that the county has allocated towards affordable housing solutions. I am looking forward to the presentation on the 20. We had almost, from what I understand, about 200 people show up last night. It was organized chaos that went so very well. We got lots of good feedback. We are getting more feedback on additional questions that we need to ask, and I truly appreciate those that have come out to assist the county's effort, as well as all the agencies that are involved in affordable housing and coming up with good solutions for our citizens, because I think it's critically important, given that we do have a housing crisis in Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Okay, that was our last speaker for the morning. We now have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp to approve the consent agenda. Seeing further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries 7-0.
Mr. Merrill.
Commissioners, it's time for your 10 a.m. time certain, which is a public hearing, D1, and following the public hearing would be taking up B5, which is the related issue concerning the debt that would be required to fund the construction of the, of the project. So at this time, we'll take D1.
Good morning, Ms. Lyons.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Lyons, Infrastructure Services. Commissioners, we're going to ask you to conduct a public hearing today to consider the imposition of a special assessments against real property comprising, comprising the proposed Dana Shores Pelican Island at Rocky Point Electric Distribution Facility's underground special assessment area to fund the underground, fund the undergrounding of electrical distribution facilities in such area, and additionally, adopt the final assessment resolution to, among other things, establish the USAA, impose special assessments in the USAA, and to fund the costs of the projects, confirm the method of assessing such costs against specifically benefited property, and authorize and direct the county attorney and the county bond council to institute bond validation... action under the state law to validate long-term special assessment debt to the issue to the county. We have our consultant here who did the work to back up the project from JMT, who'd like to give a short presentation on this before we open the public hearing.
Okay. Morning.
This is one of the units right here. I think you have space to go. Yep. Thank you, John, and thank you to the commissioners for the opportunity to present this presentation on the undergrounding of electric distribution facilities at Dana Shores and Pelican Isles at Rocky Point. My name is Jordan Kavigia. I'm a consultant with JMT, and I was hired to be the coordinating consultant for this assessment. A little background on the project, of course, the objective is to underground existing overhead TECO distribution lines. I do want to stress that this is a citizen-driven initiative led by community members of both the Pelican Isles and Dana Shores communities. The funding source for this project will be a non-ad valorem assessment collected from the affected property owners as allowed by the Hillsborough County ordinance. This project started, in essence, back in 2014, so it's been long coming. In 2014, the county ordinance authorizing landowners to petition to have their above-ground facilities undergrounded. And then, May of 2015, the Dana Shores and Pelican Isles communities were the first community to apply for this assessment. That began a kickoff of a two-ballot process. The first ballot was served in December of 2015, where 83.7% of the USAA submitted a supportive ballot. That's 349 properties who voted yes in support of the assessment. In January of 2016, the board adopted a cost resolution authorizing expenditures and engagement with TECO to start the project. In March of 2018, TECO submitted a binding estimate for the construction costs for this project. In June of 2018, a second ballot was presented to the USAA, which included those costs. This ballot was found to be supported by 80.4% or 336 property owners, exceeding the 75% threshold required by the ordinance. In January 9 of 2019, the board approved the TECO agreement and adopted the declaration resolution. On January 16, we mailed, direct mailed and published notice of this public hearing for the project and the associated assessment. As John mentioned, we had to form a USAA, which is simply an underground special assessment area, and that USAA is comprised of all the houses located within Pelican Isles and the Dana Shores community south of Dana Shores Drive. This slide represents shared benefits that are, again, will benefit the entire USAA, not just one street or the other, and we identify those as improved reliability. Obviously, there'll be fewer outages associated with storms and accidents where poles are struck. There'll be increased safety. There'll be less opportunity for cars to hit above-ground utilities, poles. There'll be less opportunity for live wires to be down during a storm or an accident. We also anticipate, obviously, improved aesthetics. As you can see here, this is a sample of a tree trimming. It's the same tree, just from two different vantage points. So you see that before you have a nice full canopy with shade, but then after a tree, a TECO tree trimming operation, it has become quite an eyesore. And we also anticipate, you know, heightened use, enjoyment, and value and marketability for all of the associated properties. So in developing the assessment methodology, there's pretty much two points I'll start with. The first thing that we've identified that all properties will benefit by the improvements on Dana Shores Drive and George Road, so all of those improvements will be shared by the entire 418 parcels within the USAA. The second point is, the additional costs associated with benefits will be distributed by shared benefit areas, meaning if you live on a particular street that's going to get the undergrounding, you're going to pay for the undergrounding. If you're on a street that doesn't have the underground utilities, you won't pay for that. You'll only pay for the portion on Dana Shores Drive and the connection to the new facilities. We also assessed it, we also made sure the assessments are allocated proportion to that benefit. And then, per the ordinance, we state that JMT has developed this assessment to be a fair and reasonable method for apportioning the cost under the assessment. This map identifies the five different service areas as identified. We'll start with Area 1, which is all properties located within Pelican Isles Drive. Again, they are already underground, so they'll pay, all properties will pay their portion on Dana Shores and George Drive, and then their connection to the new service. Area 2 is the largest area, and that encompasses all properties on the south side of Dana Shores Drive, as well as Americana, Versailles, Fountain Blue, and Eden Rock. Now, they have above-ground utilities and will be undergrounding, so they'll be paying for that improvement, as well, again, as the common areas, Dana Shores and George Road. Area 3 is Venetian Way. Now, Venetian Way already has an underground utility, so they will not be assessed any portion for that. It will only be to connect the new facilities, and again, for those common areas, Dana Shores and George Road. And Doral Drive, Doral has above-ground, and there will be some facilities remaining above-ground, so they'll get a reduction in the above-ground utilities, and they will only pay for that reduction, as well as the connection to the common areas in Dana Shores Drive and George Road. And then, there's a single parcel located in Area 5 that's actually a county-owned pump station, so we've identified that, having, they'll only pay for the benefit associated with that parcel and the common areas of Dana Shores and George Road. This chart shows the cost overview. Again, Dana Shores Drive and George Road construction costs will be shared by all. The areas 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 have been identified from a cost standpoint, and those will be distributed within the, again, shared benefit areas. Some additional costs not shown in this table are the roughly $202,000 of additional costs for engineering, financial, legal, and consulting services. That includes my fee. So the total assessed cost for the assessment is $2,398,450.75. Now, residents will have one of two options in paying for their portion of the assessment. Of course, they will have the option to pay upfront. Should I live in Area 1 and I be able to pay $4,593 upfront, I have the option to do that. Should I do that, I will avoid my portion of financing and closing costs. I will also avoid annual interest and annual collection costs. Should a resident choose to finance, again, we've identified estimated costs moving forward. Now, I will say estimated because we show here a 20-year term with a 7% interest rate. The interest rate is on note this time, and we will pursue the best rate we can in two to three years when we actually have to finance the repayment of the bond, or finance the project. So if you choose to pay for it annually, you will be assessed your share of closing costs. You will also be assessed an annual interest rate, and you will also be assessed annual collection costs. Residents will have the opportunity to pay their balance at any time. So say I finance for five years, and then I have, I choose to pay the remaining balance, I will not be subjected to any future interest rates. This is our estimated timetable, and now this highlights some of the steps moving forward. Not, it's not all-inclusive, but we are here today for the public hearing and adoption of the final assessment and the bond resolution. Sometime in February or April, we anticipate the bond validation proceeding, and then sometime in April of this year, TECO will be authorized to begin their construction. Now, we've given them an 18- to 24-month window to do their construction. Now, that then starts the second step. One month after completion, the board will accept the project. We will also go back and look if there's any cost savings. Now, remember, we gave a binding estimate that's not to exceed. We'll actually see the actual cost at that time. Should there be a decrease in those figures I've showed you already, we will then go back and adjust them down. Two months after completion, the prepayment window will open. That's when people will have the opportunity to come in and prepay for their portion of the assessment. Three months after that, the bond issued to reimburse the county will finalize, and then we anticipate at 2021 will be the first annual installment appearing on property owner's tax roll. And that completes my presentation.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lyons, anything else before I go into public hearing?
No, sir, it'd be time to open the public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, and we have 18 people that have signed up to speak on this issue. Each person has three minutes. If, we have a long agenda today, so if you don't need the three minutes and you want to waive your time or whatever, that would be appreciated, but if you have something to say, please realize that we have a long agenda, and please try to do it within three minutes or shorter if at all possible.
They're going to do that.
The first speaker is Yvonne Robinson, followed by Janet Marley. Yvonne Robinson? Yvonne Robinson? Okay, is that, are you Yvonne Robinson? You Yvonne Robinson, ma'am? Okay, and followed by Janet Marley.
Good morning, my name is Yvonne Robinson. I live in Dana Shores. In 2015, the Dana Shore Committee received approval from the county for funding of $150,000 for an overhead to underground conversion. The cost of converting this overhead system to underground is projected to exceed $16,499,450, of which the community will incur any additional cost above $150,000 for this conversion. That means if you live in the following areas, Area 1, there is 86 properties times 4,593,07, which would equal $395,004. If you live in Area 2, there are 239 properties times 6,510,70, which equals $15,657,057,30. Area 3, there are 46 properties times 4,564,18, equaling $209,952,28. Area 4, there's 46 properties times 4,818,81, which equals $221,651,26. Area 5, there is one property times $15,771,66, which equals $15,771,66, for a total of $16,499,452, our cost without interest. There'll be more if we have to take a loan out. While underground facilities are not susceptible to wind and debris-blown damage, they are more susceptible to saltwater infusion and local flood damage, which can make repairs complex and time-consuming. Overhead facility damage is easier to locate. Following recent hurricanes, damage and corrosion of underground electrical systems took the longest to repair, because the damage showed up days or even months later, causing additional outages and inconvenience to customers. We live in a flood area. In a storm, Dana Shores has been underwater. The water has come halfway up my driveway and in the backyard, eight feet from my back door. I'm 74 years old, widowed, and live on Social Security alone. It would cost me $13,479 with interest on a $6,510,70 loan.
Your time is up. Ma'am?
And that's just an estimate they're telling us.
Ma'am?
I have lived here 19 years.
Ma'am, your time is up. You have three minutes up.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. For those coming up, you have three minutes. When you see the clock in front of you, when the yellow light comes on, that means you have 30 seconds to finish up, okay? I didn't think so either. Janet Marley, followed by Allison Roberts.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for hearing us out. I'm going to be a minute.
Fantastic.
My name is Dr. Janet Marley. I have served this community for 37 years. I live in Dana Shores since 1975, and to make a long story short, it was a beautiful day, not a cloud in the sky, absolutely gorgeous, and poof, as the kids would say, out of the clear blue sky, the power went out. We have a wonderful community in Dana Shores. Everybody called everybody else, and we found that, guess what? The problem was my house to four houses down. Now, I don't have any trees, nothing blocking my electrical lines, et cetera. TECO was wonderful. They came out, and of course, he climbed the pole. He used a few words, I would have used more profanity, actually, and what he said was, Janet, the squirrels. The squirrels have eaten your line all the way down to four lines and taken out two transformers, including building nests. He had to repair the entire line all the way down to four houses. Guess what? One week later, exactly the same thing happened. And he said, Janet, same, unfortunately, the same repairman, he said, Janet, you have the worst squirrel problem in any of the communities that I have to service. Unfortunately, we have this all the time. We have surges. They're not bad surges, but enough to dock up your computer, as all of us know who have computers, have to reboot the computer. Nothing major, but very, very annoying. We have lived in Dana Shores for a long time. My neighbor to my right is 87 years old. My neighbor to my left is 87 years old. They were the first people to build in Dana Shores back in 1962. We are the only land that is not, has not been dredged, so we have a nice piece of land between Eden Rock East and West. My neighbor to my left depends on breathing equipment. When the power goes out, I see the Hillsborough County Fire Rescue and the ambulance in front of her house, and being good neighbors, we, my husband and I walk over and say, is everything okay, and so on and so forth. She depends upon the electricity for that equipment. Now, she does have backup power, and she have a backup battery, but even that goes out. And her son lives down the street. They all get very concerned, et cetera, et cetera, and of course, the fire department brings up her backup power and her backup generator, and she's okay. We have several neighbors who are dependent on lifesaving equipment down the street from us and two streets over. Loss of power is detrimental to their well-being, and this means life-threatening. So, I respectfully request your support in moving this along. Thank you. It was three minutes.
And what happened to your minute? Allison Roberts, followed by Eli Rose.
Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully request, I am the initiator of the ordinance and this project, that I have someone else who has signed up today for their three minutes, that they would be allowed to donate those three minutes.
Who might that person be?
That is Ann Tate.
Who?
Ann Tate, right now.
Ma'am, you, you, you have three minutes to, okay?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, you have six minutes.
Thank you. My PowerPoint. I am Allison Roberts, 3926.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, ma'am. Stop the clock.
Thank you. Thank you. 3926 Americana Drive. What's before you today allows residential areas like ours to finally achieve something that's been out of reach, which is undergrounding. The county's made significant investments in this program since 2014. We received unanimous support from the county commissioners for the ordinance. We received unanimous support from the commissioners on our first ballot, and we have received leadership from a variety of commissioners, and especially Commissioner Murman throughout this process. I stand before you today as president of the Dana Shore Civic Association and on behalf of the Pelican Island Property Owners Association, representing 417 homes out of the 418 on the ballot. I would like to add to the prior timeline that was shown today, and we started back in 2006 with initial estimates. In 2008 through 2012, as a community, we worked to take advantage of changes in networks, legacy systems, and so forth, in order to remove five of the six utilities that were overhead for our residents in order to help reduce their costs that they, that they come to you today with. We spoke and worked with many residents to get this done, and two themes really came out through that process. Number one, the community supported getting the remaining overhead lines underground, and number two, we needed a way to finance this, or financing vehicle, because everyone couldn't do a lump-sum payment. That brought us to a two-year process, working with the county on an ordinance in order to support that financing vehicle. We're the first to use it, and as Mr. Kavigia explained, we have well exceeded the supermajority requirements on both of the ballots that came before you. We have used a variety of means also to make sure that folks understood the project. We have used community meetings, newsletters, countless one-on-one meetings around kitchen tables, Facebook texts, emails, yard signs, Neighbors and Bulletin boards, and so forth. We've worked with folks and gotten support as far as Canada and even Thailand on this project. There are many parties that have been involved. We are being treated as a new development from TECO because of the age and legacy systems that we have in place today, which works, again, to a cost advantage to our residents. We take advantage of this now. City Council has approved an easement for equipment along Dana Shores Drive and George Road for our community. Taylor Morrison, which is building next to us, has gone ahead and converted to underground about a quarter of a mile adjacent to our project area, extending the benefits to us, and our homeowners have regularly impressed me throughout this entire project. Not only have we had supermajority support on each step of the process, but all equipment easements that are required by TECO-- easements that are required by TECO have already been donated by our folks, their sign sealed, their own record. We have free assistance that's been made available for the last few years to help anybody who has limited means qualify for deferment, to assist them through this process. We're aware of multiple instances as well of homeowners reaching out to one another to help them defray the cost when this comes to being on their tax assessment. And we have, with an estimate of November twenty-first, with this being the first time coming to folks on their bill, we will work to continue to make those pairings with folks as they come to us, and we can help get them to people that could help assist them within the neighborhood. There are many benefits associated with undergrounding that Mr. Cavilla spoke of. I'll touch on some of those that affect us from a common standpoint, because they benefit everyone, no matter what street that you're on. First is safety. Since this ordinance passed, I'm aware of multiple snap power lines in our neighborhoods. They've fallen on lawns and cars. I'm aware of fires. I'm aware of oil spewing from overhead. By far the worst was the day I got a phone call from Lieutenant Holcomb telling me that Officer Greg Patterson had been electrocuted around the corner. So, when I look at the picture on the right, it's a picture of safety. It's not just aesthetics, but that is safety. And that is not an indictment of TECO, that is just the simple reality of overhead equipment. From a reliability standpoint, we have surges from wind, lightning, and other that can cause equipment failure. Our refrigerator tripped one time when we were out of town. We returned home to a crime scene, I will tell you what. Also, you've heard examples of the importance of continuous power for the infirm. Underground is a form of hardening for us because it reduces wind susceptibility, lightning, and so forth. It also reduces the likelihood of outages because it increases our options for being rerouted instead of waiting for repairs with additional circuits, routes, and substations available to us based on our specific design. Dana Shores and Pelican Island are what I would consider to be somewhat green neighborhoods in the fact that we support our trees. This is a World War I living memorial along Dana Shores Drive. There's a natural conflict, obviously, between overhead power and tree canopies. There is also the aesthetic aspect that you can see here between having poles and wires and not having poles and wires. From a marketability standpoint, I found numerous references in the Hillsborough County Land Development Code requiring utilities be placed underground for new development. And I'm sure there are many reasons why that is the county standard, and specifically in coastal high hazard areas such as ours. Passing today's resolution provides a way for us, an established neighborhood in a coastal area, to achieve those same benefits, the same standards, and overcome market disadvantages.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Eli Rose will be followed by Brian Roberts.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Eli Rose. I live with my beautiful wife, Dr. Janet Marley, in Dana Shores. We have lived there since nineteen seventy-five. During that time, we have had numerous instances of power lines being distraught and going down due to storms and due to squirrels eating those lines. Many times, these power lines are live, and yet they're lying in our streets, which makes them extremely dangerous and can lead to deadly consequences. Our power system is archaic, and it's unsightly. The above has led to four out of five of every household in our community to vote, not just verbally but written, to support the development of undergrounding. We therefore ask that you support undergrounding. We want undergrounding because of the aesthetics. We need undergrounding for the safety. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Brian Roberts, followed by Kenneth Clark.
Hello, Brian Roberts, three-nine-two-six, Americana Drive. I just want to make a couple of comments. Being the husband of the leader of this project, you get to see it from a, you know, you're trying to take care of your wife when she's out here busy with everybody. But if I look back at this project and I reflect over the fifteen years that we've been involved in it, I think this project has really been one of the things that has brought the community together. There's different age groups, there's different, we're all at different ages, you know, some people are just moving the neighborhood, some people are retiring, some people are on, you know, medical equipment just to stay alive. So, that's the whole gamut. And when you have to work with those people, you understand their situation. When you're in there, when you're in there at their kitchen table talking about what their concerns are, you get to know them pretty well. And when we worked on this project, one of the things that was really, really spent a lot of time on was, how do we, how do we make this easy for as many people as possible? I mean, you're never going to get a hundred percent in anything, unless there's one person voting, right? There's probably not going to be a hundred percent on many things you guys vote on today. So, really, a lot of time was spent on making this affordable to as many people as possible. And when you see four out of five people voting for it, I think we've been successful at that. That's really, really important. That's one of the things that really is, I just can't harp on enough, is that's really important. This also is a, not an easy project. You saw all the different firms and all the different county people, there's a lot of different people involved in this. Each one of those takes time to set up. What are we going to say? How are we going to say it? Who are we going to say it to? What's the goal? How do we bring everybody together? So, again, this brings together businesses, this brings together communities, this brings together all ranks of people. And this is also a one-time opportunity. We're not going to be able to come back in here in six months and say, hey, we want to do the undergrounding thing again. This is it, guys. We have to vote yes right now. So, please, support this project. Please support the years and years and the thousands and thousands of hours that I've seen spent, not only out of my family, but many, many families have been doing this. I know the Ansev family's been doing this twenty years. Danny? How many years has he been doing this? Twenty years. He's been trying to, he sponsored four or five houses to get all the power lines so he could show the neighborhood what it could look like. So, down from his, from the end of his block to his house, all the power lines are down, and he paid for that out of his own pocket. It's amazing, it's really, truly amazing, the energy in this neighborhood because of this project. So, please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenneth Clark, followed by Phil Williams.
Hi, I'm Ken Clark. I live in Dana Shores. I support the undergrounding. My wife and I are both retired, and we're tired of looking at the power lines and the outages. Thank you.
Phil Williams, followed by Rosalie Martinez.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Phil Williams, a twenty-five-year resident of Dana Shores, and I'm here to enthusiastically support the undergrounding of the utilities in our neighborhood, and I appreciate anything you can do to help us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Rosalie Martinez, followed by Jacqueline Rena.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, for listening to me. I've been a resident there for fifty-one years. The wires do not bother me. I live alone, and I'm on a fixed income. I don't think it's fair to the elderly people in my neighborhood, and there's quite a few of us, they cannot afford to do this. It's six thousand, five hundred dollars just to start it, and that's not including if they mess up your driveway, getting into your electrical system, rewiring your entire house, costing probably ten thousand or more, when you are finally at the point in your life where you're retired and want to take it easy, and you have to have all this burden, or take on a loan for twenty years, put a lien on your house. It's not fair. It's not fair. There's a woman, there's many of them that live in my neighborhood, down the street, eighty-nine years old, feels she's being booted out of her house because she cannot afford it. Other people feel they have to move out because they can't afford it. It's wrong. That's my opinion, and they don't bother me, the wires. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name.
Ma'am. Jacqueline Rena, okay.
Good morning. My name is Jackie Rena. I live at seventy-one, forty-four, Pelican Island Drive. I'm here to express my wholehearted support of the utility undergrounding project in Dana Shores, Pelican Island area. As a resident of Pelican Island for over twenty years, my family and I have enjoyed the benefits of undergrounded utilities in Pelican Island. Not only is it aesthetically pleasing, but it's also, more importantly, safer and more reliable. All of this translates, too, to increased property values. Last year, the residents of Pelican Island voted overwhelmingly to support bringing the same enjoyment beyond our gates to the entire Dana Shores area. Over the last decade, our two neighborhoods have worked together to make this and other community improvement projects come to life. This has resulted in two neighborhoods becoming one community, Rocky Point. There's great pride in this community, and we're so appreciative of your ongoing support of our efforts. Thank you for supporting this project, and thank you, Commissioner Merman.
Nancy Wood. Nancy will be followed by Lynette Stein.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Nancy Wood. I'm at thirty-nine, forty, Versailles Drive. I am in support of the undergrounding utilities, most especially for the safety reasons. The tragedy in the summer of 2016 with the death and electrocution of Officer Greg Patterson is, if there's not a reason better than that, I don't know what is. So, downlines are extremely dangerous, and we think that it is best for the neighborhood to have undergrounding. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynette Stein, followed by Bettina Mon.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lynette Stein, seven-zero-two-eight, Pelican Island Drive. I've been a resident of Pelican Island for about thirty years. My parents lived there, and now I've lived there. And I wanted to say I'm in total support of the undergrounding. It's going to increase our property values, but more important than that is our safety from the standpoint of the traffic and the storms. And I want to say a special thank you for Commissioner Merman, for all your support all these years. Thank you.
Thank you. Bettina Mon, followed by Robert Saltzman.
Good morning. My name is Bettina Mon. I live at thirty-nine, fifteen, Versailles Drive. When we moved to Dana Shores in nineteen seventy-one, a majestic arch canopy of oaks planted as a memorial to the fallen soldiers lined Dana Shores Drive. Over the years, these oaks have been butchered during storms by TECO before they would restore our power. We need to give these beautiful plants a chance to survive. Also, when we moved there, the last two streets to be developed were done so with undergrounding. What a difference. Seeing that, we wanted our streets to look like that also. Eliminating these ugly wires, telephone poles, will enhance the beauty of our neighborhood and increase our property values. It took over forty years to come even close to where we are today, thanks to the diligence and hard work of Allison Roberts and her crew. I fear that if it doesn't happen now, it's never going to happen. Please vote yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robert Saltzman, and he'll be followed by Daniel, I think it's Ansu.
Good morning. I'm Robert Saltzman, thirty-nine, twenty-six, Versailles Drive. I've lived at Dana Shores for over twenty-five years. I've been in mortgage lending for over thirty years, and I rarely see a community that is as well-run with an association that we have that's completely voluntary. In other words, no fees. The benefits of the undergrounding will far exceed the inconvenience and cost, and I fully support our homeowners association and the undergrounding. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel, is it Ansu?
Yes.
Followed by Craig Kubiak.
Good morning. My name is Daniel Ansev. I've been a resident of Dana Shores for thirty-five years, and I'm here to respectfully request your support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Kubiak, followed by Carla Markowitz.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Craig Kubiak. I'm the managing attorney at Merlin Law Group over on Harbor Island. I usually talk a lot for a living, but today I'm here as a resident, thirty-nine, twenty-two, Americana. Allison Roberts knocked it out of the park. I'm usually the one presenting PowerPoints, so I won't do that and bore you. Been there, I actually played baseball at Skyway as a kid, grew up right down the street, lived there with my wife and kids for twenty years. My kids are both at the academy, constantly outside. My wife was pregnant with our daughter when the three hurricanes in 2004 hit. I've lived through a whole bunch of power outages, watched this community grow. It has amazing momentum, amazing people. Just ask for your support. Thank you.
Carla Markowitz will be followed by Holly Simmons.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Carla Markowitz. I live at three-nine, three-six, Doral Drive in Dana Shores. I've been there for twenty-two years. I am in support of the undergrounding for all the reasons you've heard here today, and I'm so proud of our community for all these efforts led by Ms. Merman for the past, gosh, ten, fifteen, twenty years, as you've heard today. So, please, vote in support of the undergrounding to ratify what our community has already asked for. Thank you.
Thank you. The last name I have on my list is Holly Simmons. And after Ms. Simmons, if there's anyone else wishing to speak, please line up to the right, my right, to, yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Holly Simmons, and I reside at three-nine, zero-eight, Dana Shores Drive, and I'm the Vice President of the Dana Shore Civic Association. I think the biggest point here today is, at the beginning of the presentation, a consultant mentioned that this is a citizen-led initiative, and I think that's what that eighty-point-four percent really is clearly demonstrating in all of the folks who were able to come here today. I spoke with countless members of our community who were unable to attend today, who wanted to come just in the support, and I think we still have many in the crowd who did not speak today, who couldn't come, many of the folks couldn't come because it's work right in the middle of the week. But I just wanted to say for myself, my household, my husband and I purchased our home in 2012, and we are part of the younger faction of the community, and I can speak for many of us who've recently moved in, as we're thinking about preparing to have our families and grow up in the neighborhood, not having this issue with overhead power lines falling down right after Irma, the day after. I've got a really nice picture of just wires strung across the street, and we don't want to have any of those more unfortunate situations occur. So, we really appreciate your support. Thank you so much for all the work you've done.
Thank you. I now have an updated list. Terrence Torini.
Uh-huh. I'm in support, but everything's been said.
Fantastic. Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's William Moore. I live at thirty-nine, seventeen, West Eden Rock. Came in adamantly opposed, but I guess I've changed my mind a bit from the outpouring of community support. I didn't go to the meetings. The, I do think we're overestimating a bit the benefits of undergrounding in terms of safety and outages. I think it will take a little longer and be more expensive to repair if you do have damage, but it'll be less likely to have outages, I will agree. I do just want to acknowledge that it is probably a regressive tax as posed, right? It's a unit base where the market value appreciation will disproportionately affect the higher-value homes, so the lower-end homes are probably less likely to be able to afford it, and so, again, by definition, it's a regressive tax. But with that, I guess I'm relatively indifferent and support the hard work they've put in. Doesn't seem like it will be too bad a project if you go forward, but I think we should acknowledge the downsides as well. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last name I have at this time. Is anyone else wishing to address item D one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Come forth, sir, state your name.
My name is Anthony LaSalvia, thirty-nine, twenty-four, Eden Rock Circle East. Been there for, well, since I was four years old, so fifty-eight, fifty-four years. I had many reservations about it, and I've learned some new information that's a little more beneficial, but the problem I had with it from the beginning was the way the vote was taken. It wasn't done by an impartial source. It was done by the people who wanted it, and there was like one vote and another vote, and it's, some people didn't get to go to it. I know many people, several people on Eden Rock didn't even get to vote. And I guess they said that vote was taken as a no vote if they didn't vote. Whether that happened or not, I don't know. The problem I did have, though, was that the, there wasn't disclosure of all the underlying costs. You've got a sixty-five hundred, on Eden Rock, there's a sixty-five hundred dollar fee you have to pay. Okay. There's, but once you go from there to hook up to your house, it should have been There's, but once you go from there to hook up to your house, it should have been where you could, it could have had an electric company come in and do a bulk rate as to what it's going to cost to hook up and give people that information, too, so they can make an educated decision on what's going to be done. But, I mean, I've learned a lot of other things that have gone on as far as, and if this is true, if you run, the underlying, the underground pipe or cabling goes in, people who don't wish to hook up to it can still keep the pole, the wire coming in from the pole to their house. And if that's true, that may sway some people's decisions, too, that may be indifferent about doing it, that are elderly, that can't afford this. I mean, because you're cutting into people's, that are on fixed incomes, into their income that they put aside for other things, and they've saved a whole life, and they have no other way of, you know, building up money again. So, I mean, that need to be looked at, too. But, I mean, if the majority goes with it, then there's not much you can do. I mean, that's what's going to sway it. I don't know how the percentage is, what you needed to come up with to go forward on this or taking your vote when it was 80% of the properties or what, how that was determined, I don't know, because how many votes were taken was never disclosed either. I mean, an extra vote count as to the amount of homes in the neighborhood, and so you could get that percentage. I never got to see anything like that. But I'm kind of indifferent on doing it or not. I mean, if it goes, the majority goes with it, I mean, that's what you're going to have to do. But at least there's a, there might be other options for people that may be funding for them, too, to help them out. But that was my main concern, was that things weren't disclosed. But thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Please state your name, sir.
Indy Questa, 3911 East Eden Rock Circle, Tampa, Florida. I agree with everything that Anthony just said. I've lived in the neighborhood since 1965 in three different houses. The electric has never gone out. Yes, transformers go out, that has happened. Now you're going to bury a pipe in salt water, because we dug, my father built many houses in Dana Shores. There's salt water about five feet where, about where they put the power line at. So you're going to have a power line in salt water. Sooner or later, it's going to go bad, and I know, I understand someone did die from all the poles on Dana Shores Drive. All the poles are about to fall over. Those need to be fixed before you start talking about underground electricity through a neighborhood. And I disagree with everything Anthony said, and there's a lot of people on fixed incomes. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else going once? Please state your name, sir.
My name is Armando Yanas. I live at 3934, excuse me, Venetian Way. Part of that, I lived on 3913 Eden Rock Circle West. My wife and I moved into the neighborhood back in 2004 and loved it so much, we moved all the two blocks when we did decide that we need, that we had outgrown the home that we were in. But the one thing that continues to resonate with me as a resident, having had two children that were born and grew up there, there's an incident, when we talk about safety, specifically about the officer that was electrocuted, that I almost watched happen with one of my kids. There's a lot of homes that are being, in the process of being rehabilitated, that are being rehabbed. Some of them have to be torn down. My four-year-old son was playing in the driveway when a crane operating across the street knocked down a power line. Now, something nobody's touched base on is that most of the streets inside of Dana Shores do not have sidewalks, which means that the kids have to play in the street. That meant that my son was within about 15 foot of a downed power line that was arcing and bouncing across that street. Now, my heart goes out to everybody in all of the different financial situations that they're in, but the reality is that this does come down to an issue of public safety. It's not necessarily just about trees. It's not necessarily about fixed incomes. It's about public safety and an infrastructure that's due to be replaced. And rather than going through and putting, pardon the pun, but instead of putting lipstick on a pig and fixing a whole bunch of power lines that are still standing up, that are going to continue to butcher trees, that are going to continue to cause issues, it seems that the best course of action would be to follow the course that, the course that has been plotted by the community. That being said, I feel like it's important for me to give you a little bit of background. I worked for Hartford Insurance as an independent claims adjuster during 2004, so I got to watch firsthand Charlie, Francis, Ivan, and Gene. I saw people that didn't have power in their homes for days, blue tarps on their roofs, that ended up dying days afterwards because they were running generators inside of their house as a result of the power outages. Now, it is true that it will take longer in those extreme events for power to be restored if there's an underground system, because it can be a little bit more difficult to detect where that problem is. But given the frequency with which those events occur, as opposed to children playing in the street and somebody accidentally knocking over a power line, in my opinion, it's not even a question. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope that you will support the process moving forward.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. We'll move into board discussion. Commissioner Merman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, gosh, late 2014, I brought this to the commission after working with the residents. I do want to thank all the residents that came today, and I understand those situations where people feel, you know, they can't afford it. I know I have spoken to the residents, Allison Roberts, and I know there are many residents that want to come forward and help those that cannot pay, so that there is a unifying spirit in that community to really help everybody, not just make it for a few, but the 80%, we set the threshold very high, 75%. And you get 80%. I mean, that is, you know, pretty phenomenal, and it's because of the leadership of Allison Roberts. She is an outstanding citizen. May see her one day up here. But she absolutely, she went door to door. She's very fair. I went to every meeting with her. The citizens asked hard questions. This was no slam dunk, you know, anything. She really had to sell this project to all the residents in that community, and a tremendous amount of hard work went into it, and not just by her. I know she has a board. Many of the board members here have spoken. But one person can make a difference, a huge difference in a community like this, and this is going to be the first time a community of this size has really, is going to implement a financing tool for something they want in their community. I think this is probably one of the most important things this board will ever pass. Hopefully, we will today, because it could be used for canal dredging, it could be used for railroad crossings, quiet zones. I mean, this is an important tool for citizens to do something for their community and empower their community, and that's what I got out of it. Allison gave a great presentation, and I'm sure you all can read this, but there, this was a huge neighborhood effort. It has made this community very, very strong and active, and I will, of course, move to approve item, well, we're actually on the report, so we need to approve item B5.
I don't think.
No, we need to close the public hearing.
Public hearing is closed.
He did.
Okay.
So we're actually on item.
You can then take up B5, sure.
So we're actually on item B5. So my comments were for that, and I'll move approval of item B5.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I first wanted to thank Commissioner Merman for what has obviously been your hard work on this and bringing this forward. I was an aide to Kathy Castor, and that was her district back in, before 2006, and I know that it was, the seeds of this discussion came to us several times during that time and concerns from that neighborhood. So it's interesting to see it evolve to this point now. I did, before we go forward, just wanted to ask a couple questions of clarification to understand just a little bit better if the, maybe a consultant or someone else, I'm not sure who can answer this, but in terms of, so after this project proceeds, each individual homeowner pays for a hookup?
Yes, per the ordinance, we can only assess the infrastructure that's within the right-of-way. So the connection from the TECO handholds to the actual residents will be at the owner's expense.
And approximately? Just.
There you go. That's from Gary Payne with TECO. We've estimated based on the distances to all the residents, we get $1,200 to $1,500 for the connections.
Okay. And my other question was, just to be clear, in terms of if someone is in hardship or, you know, the assessment, they cannot make the assessment, or it's an incredible financial burden, how does, how is that? I understand that the, there's the neighborhood, there's some individuals that might be willing to help those, but how does it impact the residents that this is a burden for, a lien? How does that work?
Unfortunately, that's out of my area of expertise, but I do understand that.
I thought maybe it was. I don't know if, if there's someone that can speak to that, just so we know.
Sam Hamilton, County Attorney's Office. There is a program under state law that is administered by the tax collectors across the state for deferment of property taxes and assessments. This would qualify for that. There are income ceilings and whatnot, so I really can't speak to individual homeowners, but there is a deferment program under state law.
Thank you.
I would also like to add that it's my understanding that the Neighborhood Association has been disseminating that information to its residents for some time, so hopefully we can get anyone that needs that assistance involved with the program.
I think, I'd, Mr. Hamilton, just, can you tell, can you describe the program and tell us how long the deferment is for or how that works?
Yeah, once there's a qualification, there's an application with the tax collector, and if it's accepted and approved, the deferment is in place until the property is sold or the use changes, or there is, I think, a fire insurance requirement that has to be maintained. If that lapses, it would be lost, and then all due. So typically, it would be when the property transfers.
And is there interest accrued on that?
Yes, it's very de minimis. It's much smaller. I don't recall. I think it's less than half percent.
Thank you. I just want to add this. I also think that the vote was incredibly overwhelming when you have 84% of a neighborhood, and I could just feel kind of the community spirit. I think that is truly something to recognize, and the sense of community that this built is pretty amazing. I also noted that back in, when we were dealing with this back in 2004, and in other instances, when I've looked and researched it a little, one very compelling fact for me was that despite hearing, oh, salt water destroys underwater, the utility lines, and that it's, that there's no safer or error-free or doesn't, it has fewer fail, or more failures or equal failures. One thing that was very compelling for me is that MacDill Air Force Base is under, undergrounded, and I can't imagine that they would not be doing that if that wasn't a very compelling reason to do so, because I'm not, I don't think that they're as worried about the aesthetics as maybe the reliability and safety. So I, so that being said, I will, I've seconded it already, but I'm, I'm very happy to see it move forward.
Okay, before I call on Commissioner Oberlin, Ms. Beck, you have something to say? Yeah.
Yeah, I think we both just wanted to clarify that D1 also involves passing the final assessment resolution. So you'd be voting on, on D1, passing the assessment resolution, and then on all the items in B5, the bond resolution, the bond validation.
So do we need two separate motions?
I, I think it would be best, yeah.
Okay. So before we do that, we're going to have to take up, your motion was to B5. So we also have to, we'll come back to D1. Do you agree with B5, right? Pardon?
D1 first.
Okay, so.
Okay, I'll move to approve D1.
No, withdraw your motion for B5.
Oh, yes, I have to withdraw because you can have two motions. So I'll move to withdraw my motion for B5 and move to approve item D1.
Okay, and Commissioner Kemp seconds that. Commissioner Oberlin, you recognize?
Thank you. I can truly appreciate the mammoth effort it took to get an 80% turnout on an issue like this, but I, but I do want to caution everyone to recognize that we are setting a precedence, because there are so many communities in our overall Hillsborough County that do have overhead power systems and other systems that cause, can cause a lot of problems during hurricane storms. I don't know that we have in our land code any future development requirement that everything is done underground, but I am concerned, I'm glad to hear about the deferment program, but I am concerned about setting a precedence on an area that puts individuals with lower levels of income, which frequently are our senior women in our community, at risk of losing their homes or feeling as though they are owing someone. Frequently, because I've worked with seniors before, the last thing they want to do is feel like they're not paying their bills. And a deferment program, while it is a solution that's offered, I would encourage the, in this particular case, that the community here that has been so strong to stand together to fight for something that is going to bring safety to their community, consider also setting aside resources to assist those residents that don't have the resources. If there, in the future, could be language within the, the program to build a special allocation for those that have below-income levels, maybe 50% of AMI in that area, to make sure that those most vulnerable people who may have lived in that community for a long period of time, retired and now live on a fixed income that just don't have the resources. I think it's critically important that we look at that for maybe future programs to avoid setting a precedence that it puts people in fixed income at a disadvantage when their vote is obviously maybe not as great in the percentage turnout for improving your community. So I strongly recommend that. The other item is that you may want to also include in future resolutions the provision for the hookup charge. You know, $1,200 to $1,500 may not mean a lot to some of you, but it's a lot for anybody on fixed income. So, again, while I, I really like this project, I like seeing it happen, I would love to not have power lines in my community that are above ground, but I, and I encourage, you know, this community to do this, but I think it is important that we, we consider making those provisions in any future resolutions that come. Thank you.
Well said, Commissioner Oberlin. I see no one else in the queue. We're on D1. I have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
We're now on B5. Commissioner Merman, you recognize? Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B5. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Let me thank all of you coming out today. We really do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members.
Thank you. Just hold up a minute while everybody moves out. Can you all move quickly? We have an extensive agenda. Those leaving, can you move swiftly and quietly, please? Mr. Merrill?
Yes, Commissioners, that takes you to your 10:15 time certain two items, F3 and B1, both concerning the transportation sale surtax. We'll begin with item F3, and this was actually brought by Commissioner Miller.
Thank you. I'm going to pass the gavel to our Vice Chair, Commissioner Kemp. As Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners and the Heart Board and the MPO, I've been approached by the county's outside litigation and bond council with the recommendation to use the bond validation process authorized by Florida's law to address issues regarding the transportation surtax. In order for the Board of County Commissioners to fully consider this matter, I've invited county litigation and bond counsel Alan Zimmert and Duane Draper from Brian Miller Oliver to address the Board of County Commissioners and provide their recommendation. Both counsel has drafted a, an attached bond res- Both council has drafted an attached bond resolution which provides for issuance of the county bonds and validation, and I'm advised that this bond resolution has been reviewed by the county administrator and the county attorney's office. So my Vice Chair, I'm going to ask that Mr. Zimmett and Mr. Draper make their presentation. When they're done, I would like the floor back so I can make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. My name's Alan Zimmett with Brian Miller Olive. Mr. Draper is here with me. Mr. Draper is county's bond counsel, and I am litigation counsel for the county in the matter of White versus Hillsborough County. We are recommending today that you adopt the bond resolution that's on your agenda and authorize us to file a bond validation, so that we can obtain a court decision on the merits of the charter amendment that was passed on November 6th, two thousand and eighteen. The specific item before you is the bond resolution. Mr. Draper can address specific questions about the financing issues, but the resolution commits the county to issuing and not to exceed ten million dollars of bonds for projects that would be approved under the charter amendment by the, through the process that's provided for in that amendment, which includes ultimately approval by the Oversight Committee. The projects are identified in the bond resolution just generally as the road transportation projects that are permitted under the state statute that authorizes this tax, and also were authorized by the voters when they adopted the charter amendment on November 6th. If bonds, if we go ahead with the bond resolution and validation of the bonds, we will file a complaint which will be brought to the court. We are suggesting that that case be consolidated with the existing case, so that we can move forward in an expedited fashion. The statute that authorizes bond validation does provide for an expedited process that ultimately, if a decision is issued by the circuit court and is appealed, it goes directly to the Supreme Court, which will allow us a process to get us a decision on the merits of the charter amendment much quicker than either in the present litigation or any other litigation that might be filed challenging the validity of the charter amendment. Additionally, if the bonds are validated, that validation judgment will preclude any future claims for the next thirty years, which is what has been authorized by the voters when they approve the charter amendment on November 6th. As I believe the commission is aware, as provided you an update on the existing litigation, there is a motion dismissed filed that could dismiss the pending lawsuit. That is scheduled to be heard on March 14th. If this lawsuit were to be filed, if this lawsuit were dismissed, the bond validation is the only methodology we have available to obtain a court decision on the validity of the charter amendment and give us the comfort level to know that charter amendment is valid, and we could proceed to spend the money during the course of the next thirty years. I believe you're also aware that there's been some issue as to whether money could be spent even in two thousand and nineteen under the process established by the charter amendment. The nice thing about the bond validation is we believe that we will, can likely have a decision by, at the latest, early 2020, a final decision, if the case is appealed to the Supreme Court. So as you're getting ready to spend the money, we should have a final legal determination. The idea of filing the bond validation has been supported by the attorneys for Hart and the three cities, and we've had discussion with them about that, and their support of proceeding with the bond validation. One thing that I did want to point out in the resolution that is different, I know this board has adopted many bond resolutions in the past, and one just on the last item, but there is an item on this bond resolution that is different and unique to this case, and I'd like to share that information with everybody. Just want to make sure we bring that. Bring that up. This is language that we've included at the request of some of the other parties, and to address specifically what was identified as Article 11 in the November 6th ballot question, to identify initially, the first sentence, to basically identify that this Article 11 and the approval of by the citizens, and that it was a result of a citizens' initiative. And the second sentence indicates that this commission, by adopting the resolution, is deeming appropriate the allocation and the uses of the funds that the voters approved at November 6th. I think the commission's well aware, the allocation generally of the funds between the cities, the county and Hart, the county will, the county and the cities will share fifty-four percent of the money. Forty-five percent of the money goes to Hart, one percent to the MPO. And then the uses of the funds are identified in the charter amendment, and I think the commission's well aware of that. So the language, this is, I want to point it out to you, because this is language not typically in your bond resolutions that you've seen before, but because of the unique situation that we have here, and the fact that this was a citizens' initiative, we thought it appropriate to include this language in the bond resolution. So with that, we would ask that you adopt the bond resolution, give us direction to proceed to file the bond validation, and to consolidate the bond validation case with the pending litigation. And with that, I think we're available for any questions. I did, one other thing I did want to point out, this is, this is the exact same methodology that was used in the Poe case, if you all remember that, we're here in the county when that was addressed. And then there is also, I have to admit, a typo in the bond resolution that I need to point out. It's kind of important. On page two, in one of the whereas clauses, the numbers were transposed. It refers to forty-five percent of the proceeds of the funds going to the county and the cities. It should be fifty-four percent, so the numbers were transposed. We'll make that correction, but I wanted to point out to the commission that the version that you have has the numbers transposed. And I think that's it. We're available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmett. Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, I'm going to make a motion that we consider a recommendation from the county's outside litigation and bond council to proceed with the bond validation proceeding regarding the transportation surtax and approve the bond resolution providing for the bond validation and issuance by the county of up to ten million dollars in bonds backed by the surtax, and made the correction on page two that our general counsel, outside counsel has indicated. That's my motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Miller, and a second by Commissioners Overman and Smith. And I'll recognize Commissioner White at this time.
Thank you. And I'll just state for the record that in the Poe case, the referendum had been put to the voters by the Board of County Commissioners, not by citizen-led initiatives. So, you know, that is, you know, we are faced with a very unique situation here. I'll ask bond counsel, you know, heading into a bond validation hearing like this, I would think, and I could be wrong, I'm not an attorney, okay? But I would think that it would be helpful to have a legal opinion showing, or opining, that Article 11 is consistent with general law. Have you asked the drafters of Article 11 to provide such a legal opinion?
We have not. And my name is Dwayne Draper at Brian Miller and Olive, and serve as the bond counsel.
Okay. Have they voluntarily produced a legal opinion?
I mean, I believe they're very comfortable with their work product.
Their work product, meaning from a law practice, or from a licensed attorney? Or have they put any of that on the record?
You'd have to ask, you'd have to ask them.
Okay. That information's just not out there before this body or before you at this point.
Correct. I think, I think what we have before you is a bond resolution which would allow us to seek a bond validation and clear up any legal uncertainty, which, you know, which has been.
And as you know, I believe there's legal uncertainty. But I think it's important for my colleagues to recognize that the drafters of Article 11 do not seem to have produced a legal opinion, indicating that on the front end, they have advice from counsel demonstrating that Article 11 is lawful. I think that's incredibly important. Now, I do have a concern that's, you know, unrelated to my other concerns as it relates to 212055 and what have you. Section eight point oh three of the charter says that the power to propose amendments to this charter by initiative is vested in the people. Now, before I continue on with your question, I just want to turn to Mr. Merrill. Mr. Merrill, about two-thirds of our residents live in unincorporated Hillsborough County. Is that right?
Approximately, yeah.
And would you classify unincorporated Hillsborough County as largely suburban and rural?
Primarily, yes, I'd say so, yeah.
Okay. So as I see it, the fate of this levy rests with the electorate every two years at a minimum. With that in mind, I want to ask bond counsel, is the voting public sworn to the same fiduciary responsibilities as county commissioners?
I'm not sure I understand the question from a bond counsel perspective.
Does the voting public have any sort of fiduciary responsibility as it would relate to bonds, or funds that have been bonded, things like that?
Is your question with regard to if we bond the revenue in terms of what occurs thereafter?
Let me, let me ask you another question.
Sure.
Does each voter, when they go to the ballot box, do they have the benefit of sophisticated bond counsel like we do as county commissioners?
They have the rights that were bestowed upon them.
I've, I can tell you, I've never gone to the ballot box with bond counsel.
Okay.
Okay? So I know that they don't, and certainly in most cases. So the voting public can opt to eliminate Article 11 by initiative at any time. Is that correct?
That, I would say to you that once bonds are issued, the impairment of contract protections in the Constitution protect the bondholders from repeal or reduction of the tax.
So what would we do with a citizen-led initiative, where all the signatures had been properly and duly collected, that states, we as the voters of Hillsborough County wish to eliminate Article 11 from the county charter, but these funds have already been bonded? What would we do with that initiative? Would we allow it to go to the voters? Would we allow a vote to take place on it?
I think the county will contractually tie its hands from being able to participate in an activity which would result in the repeal or reduction of the surtax, once bonds have been issued.
So this isn't aimed at you. This is rhetorical, but isn't that hypocritical to say that we have to move forward with this, unlawful or not, because fifty-seven percent of the voters approved it? But we're saying, but once we bonded those dollars, voters, you have relinquished your rights to amend your county charter and make changes to, or even eliminate, Article 11, like you should have the right to do under eight point oh three, because we bonded those dollars, and we've tied your hands for upwards to thirty years. We've tied the hands of future boards of county commissioners as well. I find it to be shocking, frightening, actually, that the voters' right to amend their charter will be stripped if these revenues are bonded. If that's the case, there was a duty to inform the voters of this at the ballot box. That is a complex legal issue that goes above and beyond what was presented to the voters, and it appears that upwards of fifty-seven percent of the voters of this county may have relinquished their right to amend their county charter by voting for this initiative that is just filled with flaws. The political landscape has changed drastically in the past ten to fifteen years. Furthermore, when the two-thirds of the citizens that live in unincorporated Hillsborough County figure out that there is basically nil in this package for added road capacity, there is likely to be an appetite to amend or even eliminate Article 11. The voting public should have been informed that their right to amend their charter could be stripped from them by means of the county commission or any other governing body bonding these revenues. That is just wrong. I'm just going to close by saying that we don't have an IOC seated yet. Therefore, we don't truly have a project yet, as defined within this flaw-filled article. We don't have a broader plan. That's been acknowledged. We haven't held any public hearings, not the first public hearing. And if we bond these revenues, we have likely stripped the citizens of this county of their ability to amend their charter. And I am confident that not all of the fifty-seven percent of voters that approve this were aware of this. I think it's terrible public policy to seek to bond these revenues under these circumstances, and a vote for this is a vote for virtually no funding for roads, and a vote to strip the ability of citizens to change course if needed. And by the way, section twenty-five is fine and swell, but I'm hard-pressed to believe that a county commission today, through a short statement and a bond validation hearing document, can take away the ability of future county commissions to exercise their powers and duties under 212055. An unlawful charter amendment was presented to the voters, and some half-baked statement after the fact does not remedy that. That's my position. I'm voting no, and I hope that you all think about your accountability to these voters, particularly in suburban and rural Hillsborough County, as you cast your vote today.
Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you, gentlemen, for bringing an opportunity for us to actually act on behalf of the citizens that would like to have their children go to school without being run over by vehicles because of the poor planning that we have done, or could afford, investing in the infrastructure that our citizens have asked us to invest. It's critically important that we move forward with what our citizens have asked us to do, which is to create safety and opportunity for safe communities all throughout Hillsborough County. In the previous issue that we addressed, we approved a bond validation in order to make sure that the citizens of Dana Shores could effectively finance investing in their community on their behalf. This is an opportunity to do the same. We may disagree in some way that how the money is supposed to be spent was adequately described in the legislation. I'm satisfied with how it was worded. However, it is incumbent on us to follow through with our citizens' desire to invest in our infrastructure, and they were specific about doing so because we are so drastically behind in meeting the goals and our fiduciary responsibility to build safe communities for the people of Hillsborough County. I'm going to support this in order to help us move forward. We've had delays as a consequence of the questions associated with the language with the referendum, but it is abundantly clear that our citizens are interested in having us invest in safe streets, in transit options, in strong communities that help everyone succeed. If this is the best way to make sure that we have the safe way to do so, and to expedite it, so that we can actually build sidewalks and crosswalks in our communities so our children are safe, and so that our buses are available to help our children and our adults thrive, because adults can actually get to work, or to the hospital, or to grocery stores, I'm willing to move forward on this, and I'll support this motion.
Commissioner Merman, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm, there's a couple of things that need to be cleared up for me, because in my briefings, I'm hearing one thing, now I'm hearing another. I'm not an attorney. I'm not a bond counsel. And I was told that if we approved this, we're just actually protecting the county from any future liabilities that may arise from the referendum, and that if, if by chance a decision came down in favor of one party or the other, the other party's going to appeal. It would bring faster finality to the decision. So now, I am unclear about exactly how this helps. So, now, I am unclear about exactly how this helps Hillsborough County and our government. And people are listening today, and I imagine they're pretty confused about what this is going to do. So, can you please just give me a version that's very simple that can say, "Why do we need to do this"?
Commissioner, let me try to simply address the question. Substantial questions have been raised about the validity of the charter amendment. Elected officials, all the elected bodies are concerned about spending the money without a court decision telling us whether the charter amendment is valid or not. This is a methodology that allows us to pursue that determination by a court as to the validity of the charter amendment, so that you have full knowledge, when you receive the money, that you can spend it, knowing a court has said it's valid. In the process that we propose to file a bond validation, it is open to every citizen of Hillsborough County can come in and present their position to the judge, whether they believe it's valid or not valid. But then, the judgment that is entered will, if granting the validation, precludes anybody over the course of the next 30 years from claiming that the tax is invalid. So, that gives the county the comfort level to know that what it is doing is legal and been approved by the courts.
Okay, but does it say that we're taking a position, one way or another, on the actual surtax issue as it is presented before the court right now?
Well, yes. When I go before the court, our position is going to be that the charter amendment is valid, just like in the litigation.
So, this item today basically reaffirms that? Is that what you're saying? I just want to know plain and simple what it does.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you understand, Mr. Merrill?
Commissioner Merman, I think the answer is embedded in the finality of the process. We've been directed to resolve any issues that have been raised on their merits as soon as possible by using a Chapter 75 bond validation, which commits the county to issuing some debt. We believe that you will be able to go directly from the Circuit Court, whatever the decision might be, to the Florida Supreme Court, on an expedited basis, and we believe that the finish line for that, in its worst case, is early in 2020. With regard to the current action, there is no real defined timeline in terms of when that might be resolved, depending upon how certain motions are ruled and how things go. That could go on for years. So, what we're trying to do is put it on a timeline, resolve the merits with finality as soon as possible, which would be early 2020, worst case.
May I have just one more follow-up? If we don't do this, what's the impact?
Let me try that. So, as your county administrator, and I'll speak for Christine, she can kick me if she disagrees, you know, it's our responsibility to advise you on whether to spend money that's been authorized in any way, whether it's by voters or anybody. Neither one of us know what's going to happen down the road, whether, in the future, voters may decide to overturn a tax or not. All we have to deal with today, what's in front of us, is we have a voter-authorized referendum to spend money. That's the only thing that's germane today. If you asked me today, or Christine, for our advice as to whether this board should spend money that was authorized by voters for transportation, we would tell you no. We would tell you, no, don't spend the money, because there's a risk without the bond validation, there's a risk that we may have to return or somehow reimburse monies that have been spent. So, the problem is, as clearly as I can state it, without the bond validation, with the facts that are in front of us today, we would not advise you to spend any of the surtax. For us to carry out the voters' will, we need our outside counsel to give us a clean legal opinion that says there are no impediments, there are no risks. At that point, with that bond counsel's opinion in hand, we would then advise you to go ahead and spend money, whether it's pay-as-you-go or by issuing bonds. That's where we are.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. These bond validation proceedings are fairly routine, aren't they, for other bonds that we do routinely in the county?
Yes, the county has availed themselves of this procedure many times, including on the most recent item earlier today. You typically go down this road when you have a substantial legal question that has been raised, or you have some sort of a referendum where a number of, it may have had overwhelming support, but there were still some folks who voted against it, and so, it's just good to put to bed for 29 years of the 30 years, any uncertainty with regard to pay-go spending or being able to sell bonds. Right now, we don't have marketable bonds. If the county were to proceed to sell bonds, Wall Street, Main Street are very risk averse as it relates to bonds. They want these questions resolved before the county would be in position to market bonds, and so, we're trying to cure an unmarketable bond situation and put to rest the uncertainties that exist with regard to pay-go spending.
My point is, this is not a really unusual thing for us to do, and the county does it routinely all the time.
We just did it.
Right. And we do many things in this county that are irreversible all the time. Every single zoning case we hear in this border that has been heard is, you know, you can't ever ratchet that back down, which is part of the problem that we're facing with the traffic that the voters are trying to help us with, with their own money here. And so, I'm perfectly comfortable with the finality. I think we need finality in order to carry out the will of the voters, so I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just want to turn to our bond counsel one more time, because this is an important public policy question. You know, transit projects, sidewalk projects, I'm not going to say road projects, because there's practically nil for roads in this thing, okay? But we'll point to transit projects. They can be very costly. So, we could be talking about significant bonding, both in terms of dollars and in terms of timeframe. So, what would be done if the citizens decide, you know, if the two-thirds of our citizens that live in suburban and rural areas figure out in a couple of years that they've been hoodwinked, and there's almost nothing in here for roads, and they say, "Wait a minute. We want to go do a citizen-led initiative to change courses. We're going to either ask that Article 11 be amended or that it be taken out of the county charter." Let's say, in the meantime, that the county commission or some other governing body has issued, you know, 20-year bonds, 20 years' worth of bonds on these revenues. What would be, let's say they successfully get their initiative ready, it's packaged, it's ready to go to the voters. What would happen?
So, I would analogize this to the CIT. I understand that the CIT, the 1% sales tax...
And with all due respect, if I may, we talk about the CIT, we talk about the Poe case, those are both referenda that were done by a governing body that has the benefit of having professional legal counsel and bond counsel that can guide them through the legalities of this. What we have is some citizen-led deal, which really is not a citizen-led deal, okay? It was done by moneyed interests, okay, with a $4 million campaign, and there's no legal opinion, that I'm aware of, that supports that this thing is lawful. So, you know, let's say we go through a bond validation hearing, let's say everything remains the same, you know, we put out, you know, the 20-year bonds, the public wants to change course, they go through the process as prescribed at 8.03 of the county charter, they've got it packaged, it's ready to go to the voters. What do we tell them? You cannot exercise your ability under 8.03 in this particular case to amend your charter, because we've already spent the money? I mean, I'm seriously, as a matter of public policy, I really want to know the answer to that question.
Sure, and I would just suggest to you that the Florida United States Constitution, the impairment of contract provision would be relevant in this discussion. If you'll let me go down the path of the CIT, I understand it was born differently. However, with regard to a citizen-led initiative, to alter, repeal, or modify that sometime in the past 21 years, when the county, the school board, and the various cities have bonded that multiple times, would face some of the same issues with regard to whether or not the voters could, through a charter amendment or otherwise, impair the contract, and that would be a substantial mountain to climb. And so, I do think, I'll acknowledge that the CIT was born differently than this, but once we get past a court declaration of the validity and it becomes bonded, those bondholders in both scenarios are afforded the same type of protection under the impairment of contract clause in the United States and the Florida Constitution.
Well, look, I'm going to close here. I know we're pressed for time, but I'm just going to state one more time for the record that I don't go to the ballot box with a constitutional attorney or a bond attorney by my side, okay? This is just wrong on so many levels, from the state level all the way down, to be able to embed this kind of thing in a county charter, and you can see the mess that it creates here, because we have some real problems here, very substantial problems, and the questions being posed here are not frivolous. We have some real issues before us. I'll close with that. I'm not going to support the item.
Thank you. Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
The beauty of a bond validation actually allows for investors, should we need to finance any of our major projects that fall under the provision of using this tax money and using leverage for investing right up front. Sometimes, projects you pay-as-you-go isn't a feasible option because of the upfront cost of making things happen. Sometimes, issuing a bond is required. And just as any money, you know, anyone would require a promise to pay to have that promise be valid, without a validation, we would face interest costs well in excess of what normal bond municipalities would want to issue a bond and would want to borrow money, ultimately costing taxpayers significantly higher cost and interest cost in order to finance our transportation and transit investments. I'm not sure taxpayers are eager to be paying more than they should have to, and this is one way to give us the opportunity, should we need to bond the money to finance an investment in our infrastructure, at a reasonable cost, fair to taxpayers alike. The other issue is that I'm having a real frustration with indicating that this referendum has no money for roads. We, as county commissioners, are required to actually use our tax dollars to invest in our communities. Had we not had this sales tax referendum that asked us to spend monies in certain ways, we'd have to be building roads anyway. We have a partnership with the State Department of Transportation for building roads. There are resources for building roads. This sales tax provides for resurfacing those that are in place already. And one of the number-one complaints that most leaders in our community face is the emails we get saying, "Hi, I'm tired of these potholes." So, to the fact that we can actually move forward and reasonably try to use what taxpayers have asked us to do, which is to improve our transit and transportation options, again, I'd like to support this motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just want to make the very quick point that the item before us today is a $10 million bond referendum. The taxpayers have authorized us to draw much more money over the course of 30 years, but at this moment, we're only considering a $10 million, relatively small, bond validation, bond issue and validation. And this process itself will determine the validity and the legality of a lot of the questions that you're concerned about, and it'll settle those questions for all of us. Hopefully, we're all wanting to get all this settled and put it behind us so we can move forward. This, all these, this bond validation hearing will do that for all of us, whatever side of this you're on, and it'll do it in a process of public hearings, where anyone can come provide input into this process and tell their side, and it'll do it quickly. And meanwhile, while this is proceeding, your lawsuit is proceeding, and so, the two things together will settle everything, but we'll need this small bond issuance and bond validation hearing to move forward. We are, at the end of it, if it fails, if it's not valid, if your lawsuit prevails, we're not on the hook for anything but this small bond issue. We're not determining this for large bond issues moving forward forever, and this small item before us will help settle everything forever. So, I just hope that gives everybody comfort on this issue. Thank you.
Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to close. I want to thank Mrs. Emmett and Mr. Draper and I...
Sorry, I would like to speak before...
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I'll let you close, but I just wanted to say, as the only attorney on the board, that I followed this closely as a legal matter, and I feel very good about the advice and wise counsel that we have in this case, and so, I want to thank you all for your work and efforts, and I feel very comfortable moving forward with this, in this posture. So, I just wanted to add that to the comments.
I'm recognized.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you're not the only attorney on here. I play one on TV. Let me thank Mrs. Emmett and Mr. Draper for bringing this forward and all your hard work in trying to make sure that we care for the well of the public. Let me say this, the CIT tax, the opportunity for us to vote on that was not given really initially by this board, it was given by Tallahassee. I carried the bill that allowed this county to bring that forth. If we had not have done that, this board, when we did this, would not have been able to take the vote on that. So, let's make that perfectly clear. Twice, this board had the opportunity to put an initiative on the ballot, and twice this board, not this board sitting, board now, twice the board decided not to do that because they said they were taxing the public, and you weren't taxing the public. You were allowing the voters to do what this citizen initiative did, and that was take it to the ballot and vote on it and have the opportunity to decide what they wanted to do. Since we could not do it, some citizens got together, decided, "Well, we're going to do it," and they got the signatures enough to put it on there, and the voters, being the smart voters that they are, decided they wanted to do this. And to sit here and say that the voters didn't know what they were doing, they didn't know what they were talking about, everything is flawed, is a big bunch of bull. I was going to close more eloquently, but I think earlier Commissioner Overman did it for me. So, I'm going to move the previous question, and let's take a vote.
So, we have no further discussions. No further discussion. We have a motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Overman and Smith, and please record your vote.
Motion carries six to one. Commissioner White, vote to no.
Mr. Chair, I just think it's important that, for the record, council indicate when they plan on filing the complaint for validation.
I hope to do it tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. Just to make that clear, we're not going to wait, and that issue has been raised with us, but I wanted you to know, we're going to do it tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I bring the chair, take the chair. Thank you for the question. Oh, I must just kept with doing that. Mr. Merrill, B1?
B1.
Sure.
Commissioners, this is simply asking the board to authorize us to distribute an initial draft of an interlocal agreement addressing how the surtax would be handled by the IOC and the management of it and so forth. It is a draft, and therefore, it is not etched in stone. We're looking for input from the other members of the, that would be parties to the interlocal... We're looking for input from the other members of the, that would be parties to the interlocal, which would be the three cities, HART and the MPO. We have time to methodically, you know, work on this agreement and try to bring something that's satisfactory to all the boards. So, you're not approving this draft, you're just approving, authorizing this draft to go forward as an initial step to receive input from the other parties and begin the process of developing and polishing this interlocal.
Okay, done. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. Question for Ms. Beck. Are the towns of Brandon, Town and Country, and Sun City Center parties to this?
No, Commissioner.
Okay. And Mr. Merrill?
Mr. Merrill, are we gonna provide any special funding or anything of that nature to Brandon, Town and Country, and Sun City Center? For what?
Are we gonna provide any special-
With regards to the IOC, are we gonna ask that they, that those three towns be treated any differently than the rest of unincorporated Hillsborough County?
No, I don't think, no.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna vote against this one because Section 2 states, among other things, that we will allow this agreement to move forward in such a way that it's consistent with a host of things, including the ballot language, and I just wanna remind the board and the public that Brandon, Town and Country, and Sun City Center, although they're unincorporated communities, were specifically called out in the ballot summary language and somehow led to believe, I think, that they would receive some kind of special treatment, but they won't. They're not municipalities, they're townships in the unincorporated area. So, you know, for that, for a host of reasons, I can't support this, but, you know, just with the ballot language issue in and of itself, you know, I have issues with it and won't be able to support it.
Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Oh, thank you, Chair. I'm gonna support the effort to reach out to all of the stakeholders specifically mentioned within the language. Currently, we have, I've actually reached out to the planning staff of all the stakeholders, and they are putting together a list of projects that they can prioritize for use of these funds, as the citizens have asked us to do. It is somewhat unfortunate that we have some communities that have not chosen to incorporate in order to have special mention in here, however, they are part of our role as the county, and not to discount those communities at all, a lot of the planning that's being done, not only by our transportation staff, but also by HART, along with the MPO, are paying special attention to those communities. So, in no way does this interlocal agreement interfere with that process. The best part about this is we're asking those stakeholders to come up with a great way that we can work together to create an opportunity to serve our citizens in the best way for delivering what this sales tax referendum resource has for us to follow. So, I'm going to move that we support this, this item.
We have a motion by Commissioner Overman, a second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Murman, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just wanna ask one quick question. Commissioner White mentioned Brandon, Town and Country, I think Sun City, listen.
Commissioner Murman, I'm pretty, I don't have the ballot language in front of me, but I'm pretty certain those are the three unincorporated communities that were called out in the ballot summary. There were definitely three unincorporated-
Okay, 'cause there's, like, Town and Country's not really any, I mean, it's called Town and Country, but it's not an official community as far as, but none of this precludes projects being in those areas. Is that correct? I just wanna make sure. Okay.
Right. Every area of the county is going to receive funding of some sort from, either directly from the cities, or from us, or from HART, or combined, so, yeah, no one, no part of the county will be left unaddressed, I guess.
Commissioner White, you're recognized.
I'll be very brief, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Murman, I wasn't trying to imply that any other areas of unincorporated Hillsborough County would be left out. I was just reminding the public and the board that, for some unknown reason, those three unincorporated communities were called out by name in the ballot summary. So, I would think that any reasonable voter from Brandon, Town and Country, or Sun City Center would read that and think that they will receive some kind of special treatment or maybe somehow be on par with the municipalities, and as we've heard, they're not. So, you know, why that was done, I don't know, but it's, you know, it's an issue, obviously.
We have a motion by Commissioner Overman, a second by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B1. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries six to one. Commissioner White, vote to no.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have to break in a few minutes because we have something we have to go to downstairs. We're gonna take up two more items, but we're gonna have to waive the rules to do that. The first one we need to take up is-
E1?
F1?
E1 and B3.
E1, okay.
E1 and B3.
Have a motion to waive the rules to take up E1. A motion by Commissioner Murman, a second by Commissioner Kemp to take up item E1. Seeing no further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Higgins, are you here?
Yep.
Welcome, sir.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Rob Higgins, Executive Director of the Tampa Bay Sports Commission. We've got a presentation here that hopefully they'll queue up and we'll get, we'll get rolling with. I know we're running behind, so I'll work through it as quickly as possible. First and foremost, thank you for all your support of major events here in Hillsborough County. We're fortunate to be on a great roll when it comes to major events. In 2015, we hosted our second NCAA Women's Final Four. A year later, in 2016, our second NCAA Frozen Four. Just two years ago, in 2017, we hosted the first-ever College Football Playoff National Championship in the Southeast. Just last year, our second NHL All-Star Game. This coming April, our third NCAA Women's Final Four. In 2020, our fourth NCAA Men's Preliminary First Second Rounds. In 2021, what we're here to talk about today, our fifth Super Bowl. And in 2022, our second NCAA Men's Basketball Tournament. Please note, those are all multiple appearances from these events, and as I said, that's due in large part to the support from a financial standpoint of this board and the tourist development council. The Super Bowl in 2021 is led by our host committee, the Tampa Bay Super Bowl LV Host Committee, which is co-chaired by former Tampa Bay Buccaneer Derrick Brooks. Can't have Super Bowl 55 without number 55, Derrick Brooks helping lead the way, as well as former Speaker of the House Will Weatherford. We've put together a great leadership team for the event. The Super Bowl is the biggest event in all of America. When you talk about the most-watched event on television, you talk about the more than half of Americans consider themselves to be NFL fans. It really is a great showcase spotlight for us. But why is it so important to our hometown specifically? My favorite stat about this upcoming Super Bowl is it being our fifth Super Bowl, there's only three cities that have hosted more times. When you think about that, our community continues to outpunch its weight class. It's important to our community for three different reasons: economic impact, social impact, and then the worldwide exposure that our community receives. In terms of economic impact, there's a lot of different ways to calculate it, but if you look at what the recent cities that have hosted, Minneapolis last year, and then Houston two years ago, you see several hundred million dollars that was infused into their community. We try to look at it from a couple of different ways. Because of all those different ways to calculate economic impact, we wanna look at indisputable factors that can show true ROI when it comes to these major events. So, I wanted to give you a quick snapshot of the College Football Playoff National Championship here a couple of years ago. Three different things. One, hotel rooms. You can't argue whether or not somebody came and stayed in a hotel room, not only how much, you know, whether or not they stayed there, but how much they spent on that hotel room. Then the airport, the impact that it has in terms of airline passenger seats, and then the media value, those mentions that we get as a community. So, when you look at CFP specifically two years ago, more than eight and a half million dollars of revenue was received in 2017 compared to the exact same dates in 2016. When you look at the airport, 10 extra flights were added that had over 8,000 passengers. Our airport became the busiest airport in North America the day after the game. And then, from a media value standpoint, we worked with those different broadcast partners to ensure that we're leveraging the spotlight as best as possible, and the media exposure was over $96 million. These events are really important from an economic impact standpoint, but what about the social impact? We want events that are gonna leave a legacy here in the community that'll last a lifetime. And so, you look at what Minneapolis did just a couple of years ago, just back in 2018 with their legacy fund. They had a school breakfast program, they had parks and rec programs, they were able to use these grant dollars and leverage them in a very big way. Sustainability is a huge part of the Super Bowl effort. In fact, it is with all these major events. Just yesterday, we announced with this upcoming April's NCAA Women's Final Four that it'll be the first major event here that receives sustainability certification, and that's through a pretty rigorous program where we have to check a lot of different boxes. But as you see here with this presentation with Super Bowl, zero waste of the stadium at Super Bowl 52. These are initiatives that will be in place right here with our community as well. A lot of different things go into it from a social impact standpoint. One other program I'd wanna mention that you don't see on the slide is Business Connect, and we work with the NFL to make sure that local companies that are minority and women-owned have a chance to get as big a piece of the pie as they possibly can as well. And so, that's an initiative that we'll focus on heavily throughout it, from both a social and economic standpoint. That third factor, I talked about the economics and the social impact, is that exposure. Over 100 million people watch the Super Bowl each year. More than 5,800 media came to Minneapolis last year to be a part of it. It's our job to work with each and every one of them to share our story, make sure they understand not only where our community has been, but where it's headed, and I'll talk about that in just a second. It is so much more than a game. While we talk and focus a lot about the game itself, it's an entire week-long celebration of football and culmination of sports and entertainment, but it's also important to note, it's not just that game, it's not just that week, it's a two-year run-up, and it's a two-year opportunity to work with the NFL and its corporate partners from an economic development standpoint. There's a lot of companies that will come visit here that are not only, that are official corporate partners, there's also companies that aren't official corporate partners that'll come here that we wanna roll out the red carpet to and give them a great first impression in a lot of cases to our community and make sure they understand everything our community has to offer. I talked about telling the story of the future. We're so fortunate, just since 2009, think about all the ways our community has changed. You know, we look at this upcoming Women's Final Four that we're hosting in April, they just were here in 2015, and now we have an all-new experience just from the last four years, let alone when we're dealing with Super Bowl and talking about a 12-year window. But again, we'll also focus on everything new and exciting that's happening with Water Street, the Heights redevelopment, everything our community is doing. To be able to do that, we certainly need resources. Every one of these major events is a public-private partnership to some degree. We're fortunate in the years past where we've had that, that public support. We come to you today with hat in hand, asking you to invest $3 million of tourist development tax money to help with this process. To give you a little bit of a snapshot, college football playoff, and because I mentioned that private sector, the College Football Playoff National Championship had nearly 100 partners from a private standpoint. The private companies help carry the burden of this, and we think with Super Bowl and this project specifically, they'll carry it to the degree of more than 2/3 of the overall host budget. We do, because we're this far out, have the opportunity to leverage it across, or stage it across multiple years, both fiscal year 19 and 20. It is a situation where having this sort of clarity this far out will help us to be able to make sure we're leveraging and maximizing those dollars to the best degree possible. With that, I'm gonna come up for a quick breath and ask, and open it up to any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. We appreciate that very much. Commissioner Higgins, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rob did an excellent job with the presentation, and I know we're running behind, so I'm gonna keep my remarks brief. However, I want to remind everyone just how we were awarded our fifth Super Bowl, and that's because of the incredible leadership of Rob Higgins and the great work of the Tampa Bay Sports Commission. Back when we were deciding whether to bid on Super Bowl 55, football was coming back to LA, a new stadium would be built, and the NFL awards cities who build a new facility with a Super Bowl. So, everyone knew the fix was in, if you will, for LA to host this game, and as a result, many cities did not bid on the event. But that wasn't good enough for Rob and Team Tampa Bay. Rob knew that it was in our best interest to present the best bid possible, because even if we did not win, it would position ourselves for future Super Bowls. Well, as expected, LA won the 2021 game, and we came in second. But if you fast-forward a couple of years, LA was behind schedule on their stadium construction, and as a result, the NFL awarded Tampa Bay the game. So, Rob, thanks to your leadership, and we will be hosting our fifth Super Bowl. A couple of things I wanna stress, and I'll go quick because Rob touched on most of these. Whether you're a football fan or not, the Super Bowl is the biggest event in America, and it is the most-watched event on TV. And as Rob said, it is much more than just a game or an event, it's a week-long experience with Super Bowl experience, the Super Bowl Live, NFL Honors, NFL Radio Show, NFL Opening Night, in addition to 150 other parties and events that took place last year in Minnesota. There is significant economic impact, social impact, and worldwide exposure from hosting a Super Bowl. With respect to the economic impact, as Rob said, the last two Super Bowls, Minnesota's showing $450 million local gross spending, and Houston, $428 million. The room nights, Minnesota, $266,000 during a 10-day period, and Houston, $337,000. Now, there are contrarians out there, including a certain professor from USF, who will say the economic numbers are inflated, and any spending during an event is simply displacing spending that would otherwise occur. Of course, this is utter nonsense. Most economists acknowledge the significant benefits from hosting major worldwide events such as a Super Bowl, and that's why so many cities not only bid on hosting the Super Bowl, but are also willing to contribute an average of nearly $15 million in public funding, with New York contributing $36 million, Dallas $32 million, and Houston $25 million in public funding. But in order to see the true economic impact of hosting a major event, all you have to do is look at the actual data from the 2017 College Football Playoff National Championship game. These aren't economic models which make assumptions and include indirect economic impacts, which you could argue inflate numbers. Rob went through the hotel impact, the airport impact, the media value, these numbers are irrefutable. The College Football Playoff National Championship game wasn't an enormous event, but the Super Bowl is even bigger. And while there are economic benefits from hosting the game, there's also a significant social impact and worldwide exposure from showcasing our community on the biggest stage in the world. As Rob showed, this will allow us to leverage the worldwide exposure, with last three Super Bowls averaged 107 million viewers worldwide watched the game, and 125,000 total non-local visitors attended the host city. With respect to today's agenda item, the funding is not unprecedented. 10 years ago, this board unanimously approved $1.5 million to host the 2009 Super Bowl, and we've also approved $1 million for the RNC, Bollywood, and College Football Playoff. I think it's important to point out, again, Rob touched on this, that our investment is only a small part of what must be raised to host a Super Bowl, with most of the funding coming from the private sector. The game and its impact continues to grow every year, and as a result, the cost associated to host this event also increased significantly. As you can see, in 10 years, we'll be doubling our commitment, but I can promise you, the private sector will contribute more than double what they invested in 2009, and as I mentioned, the $3 million that we're considering is far less than the nearly $15 million average in public funding investment from other host cities. million average in public funding investment from other host cities. The funding will come from TDT dollars, which is an appropriate source and consistent with past county investments. Whenever we utilize tourist tax dollars, it's necessary to always point out that these dollars cannot be used for schools, law enforcement, fire rescue, or other government services. These uses are restricted to primarily market and promote tourism and for sports facilities, aquariums, and zoos. In 2017, the legislature did expand how tourist tax dollars can be used, however, their uses are still narrowly defined. So in closing, our community has been very blessed to host so many major worldwide events in recent years. But make no mistake, hosting, there's no other event like hosting a Super Bowl. We're very fortunate to be hosting our fifth one in 2021, and with that, I'll move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Merman to approve item E1.
Actually, B3. B3 is the item.
B3, I'm sorry, B3, okay. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
I will be brief. I just wanted to say that I thank Mr. Higgins, and it was a good conversation. I am glad to see the Super Bowl outlining sustainability and the conversation that we had about that and moving that forward and zero waste and setting a, a bar for that. I'm, I'm all about that. I know the Super Bowl might be a bit out of my wheelhouse, but I like to see that all moved forward in Hillsborough County in every way. And also, I'd just like to tell the board that we at heart have offered the CEO position to Ben Limer, and he is now at MARTA, second in charge at MARTA in Atlanta, number eighth transit system in the country. And he has spent the last year as part of his responsibilities organizing for the Super Bowl that just took place and managing the transportation there. And I think he'll be well-positioned here to serve in this community. I hope that by the time this comes around, we will have moved significantly in the direction of a robust transit system here in Hillsborough County that could provide a lot of relief during that time, that week. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. It's always exciting to bring the Super Bowl or a large event to our community, but we always have to be careful about the tax dollars that we spend on those events. And so that's why I asked for comparative figures of what we have spent on similar events in the past and what some other communities have spent on, on Super Bowls in the past. And, and so I was thankful that, to see that included in your presentation. Can't help but point out that Minneapolis put on a Super Bowl with zero public dollars, all privately funded, and as has been noted, it was very, very successful generating over $400 million in economic benefits to their community. The four most recent events that are comparable that our county hosted, including the last Super Bowl, we only spent $1 million to $1.5 million, and today we're asking for $3 million. I would also note that some of the other parties in the public-private partnership also receive tax dollars. So, Visit Tampa Bay, the Tampa Bay Sports Commission, those things do get tax dollars, so that's even more that the county taxpayers are providing above the $3 million that you're asking for today. So, I would have liked to have seen more, more accounting, more justification for asking for double the amount this time than we spent last time, and more than triple the amount that we've spent on some other similar large events that, that were beneficial to this area before, before supporting going up for $3 million.
Let me ask you a question. When was the last Super Bowl?
It was 2009, 12 years ago.
12 years ago. We spent $1.5. Tell me what you can buy today for the same thing you paid 2009?
Yes.
Again, there's other, it's more than the $3 million, because the, some of these other sources have more county tax dollars in it. And I'm just, all I'm asking for is just a little more justification of why we should go, go farther this time and, you know, ratchet that up.
Yeah, but for perspective, and it was, it was a great exercise following up on your requests related to some of the other public investment levels of Super Bowls. And as we looked at those last nine, you have some as high as 36.9 millions, 25.4 million, 32.1 million. The overall average was close to 15 million on it. It's important to note, too, on that Minneapolis Super Bowl, they have 19 Fortune 500 companies there. So literally before the bid starts, they bring everybody in a room and they say, "We need you for a million and a half to $2 million each in order to make this happen." And all of a sudden, they have this huge seed. Unfortunately, like if we did that exercise, it'd be pretty lonely in that, in that, in that room with the, in terms of Fortune, local Fortune 500 companies. So, that's, that's unfortunately not an option, but I do commit to you, just as the investment has, has doubled from a public standpoint since '09 over the last 12 years, it's done that and more from a private standpoint. So, they're, the private sector's certainly stepping up to an equal or greater ratio, that's for sure. And I will tell you, the event, as Commissioner Miller alluded, we don't ever want to get in the business of comparing these major events. They're all near and dear to us. I love my, both my children equally the same, but I will tell you, they are different scales and scopes. We don't like to say this one is here and this one's there, because the goal is to get this one and this one back to come here, and know that we love them the same.
Commissioner Ovino, you recognize?
Thank you. And I, and I do appreciate your questions about this. I'm very excited because what, when we do invest in the Super Bowl, we get things like, you know, the NCAA Women's Final Four, of which my alma mater was here, and hopefully will be back. So I'd recognize that by doing, by investing in the opportunity to have the Super Bowl come to the Tampa Bay region as a whole, it brings resources, jobs, opportunities, sales tax, hotel revenues, all of those things that we pay for to our, our community. And, you know, if it actually brought a whole bunch of Fortune 500 companies here to find out how awesome it is to live in Tampa and Hillsborough County, that might think about relocating here, I'd, I'd be all about that, too. So maybe we would have some more sponsorship dollars so we wouldn't have to put in so much. But I'm excited about the opportunity to have the Super Bowl here. I am a football fan, so I do like it. I didn't really like this past Sunday's as much, but that is personal preference. But, you know, at the end of the day, investing in an opportunity to bring jobs, resources, opportunities, and future businesses to our community, I think is a worthwhile investment. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. It's, it's the absolute biggest stage we could ever be on, so we're really excited for it naturally.
Mr., I'm going to vote, I'm going to support this, but I need you to do something for me. Between now and the Super Bowl, let's make sure that that team from that Massachusetts area does not come here. That's number one. You know, they have, they have, they have the, the, the Hagan of football. You know, Hagan never retires, and it seems like Brady won't retire either. So let's try to make sure that, if you can, I know it's tough. I'm just kidding.
We promised 75 degrees and sunny that week, so we'll see what we can do on anything else, that's for sure.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Merman to approve item B3. Seeing to further discussion, please record your vote.
Motion carries six to one. Commissioner Smith, vote at no.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Merman?
That just leaves, before we break, item F7, which was Commissioner Merman's item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, well, no, it's good afternoon. Well, thank you all for allowing me this opportunity to introduce our new CEO of Career Source Tampa Bay. This is a monumental day. This is a new day for Tampa. And we are, I'm so excited about Mr. Flanagan. I just want to kind of give you a brief timetable. Since August 2000, the Board of County Commissioners designated Career Source Tampa Bay the responsibility of being our local workforce development board. In that role, they were responsible for meeting the workforce needs of residents and business community of Hillsborough County. And over the last 19 years, a lot has happened at Career Source. But over the last year, Career Source Tampa Bay has been led by interim director Judith Dorsey, and I want Judith to stand up, because she really was in the limelight, going through the investigations, allegations, you name it. She handled it, and she did a fantastic job. So I just wanted to give her that recognition. She worked with the board directors and the economic development staff here at the Board of County Commissioners to lead the organization. She reconstituted the board of directors, several staff policy changes to improve the organization's transparency and accountability. She oversaw the transition to a standalone, excuse me, entity separate from Career Source Pinellas, in which they are solely dedicated to meeting the workforce needs of Hillsborough County employers and job seekers. And just so you all know, getting a job in Hillsborough County is still the number one top priority. I know at times it seems like it's just transportation, but having a job and living here, but getting to work is, is also the, the other priority. But it is a hot-button issue, and with our unemployment being so low, of course, it is driving us into making sure we have high-wage jobs available, that there are sector-driven opportunities. In August last, of last year, 2018, a CEO search committee was formed to conduct a CEO search and recruitment process. The process resulted in 314 applications from all over the world. From these 314 applications, the top six candidates were invited for in-person interviews with the CEO search committee. We chose two finalist candidates, from which they unanimously chose one candidate to be presented to the full Career Source Tampa Bay Board for approval at our meeting on December 20th, 2018. The candidate chosen by the search committee and approved by our board is Mr. John Flanagan before us right now. He has tremendous experience leading workforce development boards in Arizona and Pennsylvania, comes to us from being the executive director of Bucks County Workforce Development Board in the greater Philadelphia region. He started in his new role here in Tampa Bay at our Career Source on January 21st. And without further ado, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. John Flanagan. He is our new CEO of Career Source Tampa Bay. And of course, you give brief remarks. You can come back and talk to us another day. We have a reception waiting downstairs.
Absolutely, no problem. That will be brief.
But we're just so happy to have you here.
And as I am delighted to be here as well. So, thank you, Commissioner Merman, I appreciate that. Thank you to the Board of Commissioners for allowing me to address everybody today. There's a few other people I, I would be remiss without thanking, you know, Commissioner Merman certainly, Sean Butler, who is here today, who is our chair of the Career Source Tampa Bay Board. Sean has been instrumental and has been extremely effective in shepherding the board through some, oh, I guess, some fairly stormy waters. And I appreciate his, his mission there. And also, the Board of Directors for staying mission-focused. And really, I'm, I'm so delighted that you recognized Judith for her contributions. I'm going to, I'm going to recognize the entire staff of the Career Source Tampa Bay organization, because through all of this, they still had to see job seekers and help the business community find talent. That never was able to stop. So then, they did a, they did an admirable job, given the situation. So, before I get started, I fully hear everybody on no New England Patriots in the Super Bowl. So my last, my last trip to Tampa was in 2009. As an avid Steelers fan, it was great. Maybe in 2021, my Steelers will be playing your, the Buccaneers, not my second favorite team. Sorry, can't make it my first.
I tried to get him in his employment agreement to make Bucks the number one. He wouldn't do it. They did say the Lightning. He did put the Lightning in.
Yes, that is true. So I have a, I have a mission that's, you know, fairly simple in saying, but very, but very complex in its, its delivery. My mission is to restore confidence in Career Source and the mission that it's supposed to serve. That mission is helping job seekers find their career and helping the business community find the talent that they need to thrive. There's going to be another 50,000 jobs created in Hillsborough County by the year 2023. So it's very important that we stay mission-focused and we help the job seeker community with access to acquire the skills they need to compete in a 21st century economy, and in turn, help the business community keep the talent that they need to continue to operate here. And a big focus of that is really going to be on our small business community. 83% of, of payroll businesses in Hillsborough County have less than 20 employees. You are a very large small business community. We will do our level best to target the small business community in regards to the programs that we have, from the standpoint of helping onboard new talent and helping defray some of that cost, as well as helping some of their current employees acquire the skills they need to remain competitive in the workplace. It's extremely important, and it should be the mission of every workforce development board across the country to do that. We have some built-in benefits in Florida and specifically Hillsborough County. It's a beautiful place to live. And you get about 100,000 new residents every five years, which is fantastic. I've worked all over this country in workforce development, and it's typically not the norm. We're typically trying to stave off people from leaving and helping the business community continue to find the talent in spite of, of the lack of talent there. So, doesn't mean the mission is any, any less, any less difficult. And thirdly, we need to be a responsible and good steward of taxpayer funds. And the way we do that is we focus on the above goals that I just stated. That is what these tax dollars are for, is to help the community grow from a jobs perspective and how we partner with our economic development entities in getting new employers to come to the, to come, to come to the Hillsborough County area. Told you I was going to be brief. So that is all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But again, I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to talk today. And Commissioner Merman, thank you, I appreciate your confidence.
Thank you.
To be able to get the job done.
Commissioner Ovino, you recognize?
Mr. Flanagan, welcome.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to all the great work you're going to bring to here. We actually have a, a significant mission in, in front of us. The organization of heart is going to need, if all of the world is perfect, a significant number of drivers, a significant number of maintenance workers and planners for expanding their, their, achieving their mission.
Sure.
In addition to that, we have a large population of people coming here. So we need, you know, individuals with training to know all of the wonderful trades associated with home building, as well as road building and, and community building and planning for transportation options. We do have a very large mission ahead of us to help this community grow. And in spite of the fact that we are going to have new businesses and maybe with the Super Bowl attracting Fortune 500 companies coming here, we do have a venture capital community and a high-tech community that is growing rapidly. So you will have plenty of opportunity to help employers find that. But I think it is also important that we have partnerships in the community to build those workforce in order to be prepared for the jobs that are going to be needed in this community.
I agree with you 100%.
Thank you.
That's the mission of the federal legislation. The Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act mandates partnerships with community agencies to make sure that we serve what we deem some of the hardest to serve in the region. And we're in a good economic climate to do that. You know, there's more job openings right now than there are people to fill, and that in the United States and in Hillsborough County. So the opportunity is ripe, you know, to make some of that happen.
Well, thank you for being here.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. Just want to welcome you also, and just, thank you, Commissioner Merman. I think it was extremely important that we separate the two career sources. I just wanted to acknowledge that today, because I thought it created, as, as we know, a really untenable situation, a lack of accountability. And we are a county as large in population as 10 different states and physically the size of the state of Rhode Island. And in so many places, I find that the whole regional push can also be of very, of great detriment to us having our focus, our investment, and our accountability here in the county. So I think that this was a very good move to have our own organization back again here in Hillsborough County.
That's great. I'm happy to lead it.
Mr. Flanagan, welcome.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, it's now 12:30. We're going to stand in recess until 1:30. Is there any objection? Lot of objection. We're in recess until 1:30.